And we are here for a public hearing on file ZC 0012-23. Anybody have visual or hearing impairments that requires assistance? If you do, you probably know what it says. Okay, call for conflicts of interest.
Commissioner Omit has none.
Commissioner Williams has none.
Commissioner Bradshaw has none. We're not proceeding through here. Okay, there it is. Okay, staff will present its report first, then the applicant will provide an overview of the project, answer questions from the governing body, and we'll go into public testimony. We will get testimony of support of project first, then we will go neutral, which I know one day we will set history and we will actually have a neutral. It hasn't happened yet, but could. And then testimony in opposition. Public testimony may be limited to three minutes. Exhibits must be numbered prior to the testimony. They will be retained by the county. Testimony must be specific to the project or code compliance. Avoid repetition if you can. And then there will be an applicant rebuttal. No further public testimony will be allowed after the rebuttal. Then the public hearing will close, and we will deliberate amongst ourselves.
Thank you, commissioners. Good afternoon, public commissioners and new brick mining staff to the record. We are here to discuss his own change. File number is ZC 0012-22. This is from Rural Five Rural Service Center. On account of revised code 12212, says that any person may initiate an action to change his own or comprehensive plan map. BCRC 216, evaluation of amendment of proposal. Staff in the governing bodies shall review the particular facts and circumstances of each proposal submitted, and shall determine whether there is adequate evidence that the proposal is in accordance with the general and the specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. BCRC 12-320.1 states zoning districts and map designation purposes. The purpose statement of each zone and map designation set forth in the following sections shall be used to guide the application of the zones, the designations to all lands in unincorporated Bonner County. So, project summary. The applicant has proposed a zone change from Rural Five to Rural Service Center for the purposes of building a small-scale retail establishment, both storage, and its single-family dwellings. The request was evaluated against the standards for Rural Five and Rural Service Center districts. The parcel is currently comprehended rural residential. Rural residential service center district is established to promote the development of local commercial services in small communities to meet the needs of rural residents as well as limited tourist commercial services, and limited light industrial uses consistent with the maintenance of the rural character of the area. The Rural Service Center District is intended to provide opportunities for a variety of affordable housing types that are within walking distance of commercial services. Use of the, use of this zone is appropriate in areas designated as neighborhood commercial, resort community, or transition by the comprehensive plan. And the community plans, and that are served at the time of development by adequate water, or, sorry, adequate sewage disposal service, water supply, road, and other needed public facilities and services. Expansion of a Rural Service Center District, or the creation of a new Rural Service Center District, may be considered only if the expansion will not negatively impact the safety and function of state highways or other roadways. That's the purpose statement for the Rural Service Center District. So some background on the particular parcel we're talking about, highlighted in yellow this afternoon. It is an unplatted parcel. It's approximately 11.8 acres. It is currently zoned Rural Five and has a land use designation of Rural Residential. The parcel is accessed on the corner of Dufer Road and Bay Road. Both are Bonner County owned and maintained 60-foot paved right of ways. As far as environmental factors go, this parcel is fairly unremarkable in that it does not contain any map slopes, it does not contain any map wetlands, it does not have any frontage on a lake or a stream that is in with special flood hazard zone X. Services that are capable on this property are individual wells, individual septic systems, fire services provided by South Creek Fire District, powers Northern Lights, and is within West Ponderay School District number 83. These are the standards for the rural district as well as the Rural Service Center District for which this evaluation is compared against. So Rural Five has already been determined on this parcel. So the Rural Service Center, the property needs to be able to provide for a range of small-scale retail or rural services, allowing for mixed-use buildings, allowing for light industrial uses, excluding commercial uses with extensive outdoor storage, excluding large-scale commercial uses, enhanced pedestrian access, and improve the character of the area. It's comprehensive plan designation goes in, and the creation of a new Rural Service Center District. So we look to see if the property is developed at or near one dwelling unit per five acres. The parcel is currently zoned R5 and is adjacent to properties that are currently zoned R5 and developed at or one near dwelling unit per five acres. North of the proposal is a 60-plus lot subdivision that has properties ranging from .02 acres to four acres, and is currently zoned recreational. The property to the east is approximately 120 acres, and the property to the west are approximately five acres and zoned Rural Five. So we look to see if the property is capable of providing a range of small-scale retail and rural services. The economic development goal of the comprehensive plan, that the Bonner County shall encourage economic diversity for the financial health of the community and the maintenance of its rural atmosphere. This property is approximately 11 acres, which is sufficiently sized to provide a small range of small-scale retail uses. Other areas of Bonner County have benefited from the Rural Service Center zoning designation. On account of revised code, development standards safeguard the rural atmosphere is protected. So the Rural Service Center allows for mixed-use buildings, such as housing over office retail and a range of housing types, which include single-family dwellings, cottage housing, townhouses, apartments, mobile home parks, where sufficient services are provided. The Rural Service Center District allows for smaller-scale lots, which would address the housing needs of Bonner County. DAPKAN has indicated that single-family dwellings ought to be developed on the parcel. So the chart that we do see on the screen here is a breakdown of lot sizes that could be in the Rural Service Center District. If all services are met, they could go down to 12,000 square feet. If only urban water is available, it's an acre. If there's urban sewer only, then they can go to 20,000 square feet. If they decide not to provide any urban-like sewer services, it can be two and a half acres. That would be an individual well and septic for those parcels. So looking on the right of the screen there, that is a snapshot of the commercial use table. That's not its entirety, that's just a small portion of it. So we look to see if the property can handle light industrial activities, conduct to primarily indoors, and impact to uses, uses are mitigated. Use table in Title 12, Chapter 3.3 limits the use allowed in the Rural Service Center. Some of the uses are permitted by right, but most require condition to use permits. New development on properties will be required following standard, the design standards found in Bonner County Revised Code, Title 12, Chapter 4, for developments, and obtain building location permits for all structures per BCRC 11101. So part of it is, excludes commercial uses with extensive outdoor storage. This is a conceptual drawing submitted by the applicant. The use of this is being, the use that is being proposed does not lend itself to extensive outdoor storage, as the proposed use is the retail sales of gasoline and sundries, both storage facility, and single-family dwellings. On account of revised code 12-33, commercial use tables, storage of materials are not allowed in connection with a prohibited use not allowed, meaning they can't store things outside that are not connected to the use that may be permitted. So we look to see if it excludes large commercial uses that would provide more effective, more effectively located incorporated cities. The Rural Service Center District is established to promote the development of local commercial services in small communities that are underserved in small-scale commercial uses. The proposed use is for a gas station and both storage is considered small-scale commercial operation. According to code 1233, Note 26, commercial use tables, sorry, commercial use table, retail stores shall have a maximum floor area of 10,000 square feet or less. Both storage is limited to the maximum of 10,000 square feet. This parcel is approximately 11 acres, so it appears that there's sufficient room for those type of activities, given the number of square footage that can be developed for those uses. So applying, since this would be a new development as a possibility, the standards found in Bonner County Revised Code 12-400 in sequence requires that any future development of this property will meet the stand, will need to meet the standards to protect the character of the surrounding area. On the right, those are the list of standards for which uses get reviewed against and have to meet. Comprehensive plan designation. Use of this zone is appropriate in areas designated as neighborhood commercial, resort community, or transition by the comprehensive plan. DAPKAN has applied for a comprehensive plan amendment from rural residential to neighborhood commercial. If the applicant is successful in obtaining the map amendment, DAPKAN, at the time of development, will need to serve the property with adequate sewage disposal services and water supply. The parcel currently is accessed by Bonner County-owned right-of-way. Bonner County Sheriff, South Creek Fire, and Northern Lights are some of the public services available to this parcel. Creation of a new Rural Service Center District. The creation of a new Rural Service Center District may be considered only if the expansion will not negatively impact the safety and function of a state highway or other roadways. Bonner County Road and Bridge Department in May of 2023 conducted traffic count over the Memorial Weekend. Data shows that the average daily count was 669 vehicles in the 9100 block, and 630 vehicles in the 10,200 block. In addition, from 2017 to 21, intersection of Bay and Dufer Road, there were no reported crashes to law enforcement. As a comparison, the map shows two car crashes at the intersection of Ot Basin Road in Dufer, four crashes at the intersection of Lake Shore Drive in Dufer, both which have a fewer average daily count than Bay Road. 16 crashes at Dufer in 95. Both Dufer and Bay are both Bonner County-owned and maintained paved right of ways, which this proposal is locating. Bonner County Road and Bridge expressed that this request will not generate significant amounts of new traffic for Dufer and Bay Roads. Road and Bridge Department suggested that future commercial access onto the site be required to come off of Bay Road. This is a map looking at those two different blocks for which the traffic study was put over the Memorial Weekend. I'm not sure if the Road and Bridge Directors care to elaborate further on this, if you have questions on it. Oh, he'll be available for questions. This is just information that's provided to staff. So these are the agencies that were routed for comment. Idaho Department of Water Resources, Bonner County Road and Bridge Department, and DEQ. All submitted letters of comment or recommendations. Idaho Fish and Game, Idaho Transportation Department, and South Creek Fire submitted comments of no comment, and we did not hear back from all the other agencies. Public comment in opposition, there was several. The overlining theme of those comments were increased traffic, noise, safety, and crime, water contamination, fuel spills, water supply, specifically don't want the gas station and retail establishment, and it should be located elsewhere in the area. Public comments came in in support of the project. Those overlining themes were convenience of having a gas station retail business that serves the needs of the growing population in the area, and will provide more options than the existing business in the area. Those avoid that exists for convenient services. All those letters in their entirety are included in your binders this afternoon. So let me get back to the standards, whether this piece of property can meet them. We already know that it is developed at or one near dwelling for five acres and is zoned R5. So it is capable of providing a small range of small-scale and retail rural service uses. It can allow for mixed-use buildings, it can allow for light industrial where activities are conducted indoors and impact to adjacent uses are mitigated. Excludes the commercial use of extensive outdoor storage, excluding large-scale commercial uses, as we heard in the square footage, and enhance pedestrian access to improve the character of the rural area, and the creation of the Rural Service District with no impact to the roads, as the public comment, or the public comments submitted by Road and Bridge. The zoning commission unanimously recommended approval with a development agreement on this proposal. That concludes my presentations, commissioners. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Mr. Grim, on the initial commercial use table, the table one was presented, I don't know, is Liam slides back. Next one.
This is the housing.
Yep, it says.
Oh, sorry.
Now, on the standard, it says minimal lot size while all urban services are available. What are the criteria according to Bonner County Revised Code to meet that for urban services?
So urban services can be existing city-type services plugging into a city if it's close enough. They can look at urban services as being shared well agreements, or sewage disposal according to pan end of health, and possibly DEQ, I guess, depending on the amount of sewage that would be produced. Current, well, last version of the comprehensive plan, there was roughly 270 shared well agreements at that time, and they developed it in 2008 when it was adopted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman?
We have Mr. Top on line. If you guys have any questions, you can email. Or you can keep on the, I think you got to do for the, that's in the second line.
About an $800,000 hole, yes.
Got a Lincoln.
Mr. Grim, how are you?
I'm good. Good to meet you.
Commissioners, Jeremy Grimm for the record, Whiskey Rock Planning, representing the Hammond's. File is ZC 0012-22, zone change from Rural Five to Rural Service Center. It's June 26, 2023. It's June 26, 2023. Just to start, just want to touch on a few of the expectations to the applicant here. One, that this isn't a popularity contest. Two, quite clearly, zone changes per Idaho code are a quasi judicial action, and you're probably aware that that means you're acting as a jury and a court, and as a result, you're unbiased. And the first thing I want to just address is, I'm sorry, your legal counsel's not here right now. I'm not an attorney, but I've studied extensively land use law in Idaho, and what I just witnessed was part of the judiciary moving to support and help the opposition order themselves for maximum effectiveness in the opposition of this file. Commissioner Williams clearly stated and facilitated that. If this were appealed, I believe that's going to show a bias, but we'll proceed just because we're all here today. But this decision should be based on the evidence and the facts, and you are unbiased until you've heard those facts.
So Mr. Graham, if you could please make sure you represent what I said correctly. They have given an order in which they wanted to speak and to expedite to make sure we move this meeting along smoothly. We asked them this in the order, but they did not do that last time that made this meeting vote. So there was no decision of bias. It's called structuring the meeting officially.
Thank you for that clarification. And for best practice in Idaho, what, what public hearings typically do is they actually scramble the order, so the opposition specifically can't do what was facilitated by the commissioner today. We've got them all lined up, ready to go. Just saying, it feels a little biased from the start, but I don't want to get distracted. I want to get through this. So where we are historically, we applied for a rezone, which was unanimously approved by the zoning commission on October 20, 2022. That proceeded to the Board of County Commissioners in December 2022, and at that time, there were questions about whether the comp plan amendment had to align with the rezone request and if, in fact, a comp plan amendment should be considered. The board decided to remand it back for a comp plan amendment and a clarification of the development agreement. On 614, you denied the comp plan amendment, commercial neighborhood, and today we're here on the recommendation of the zoning commission to rezone to Rural Service Center, and the path forward for the Hammond's at this point is for you to act on that zone change that was unanimously recommended by the zoning commission. And there is a historic precedent in Bonner County to support zone changes without aligned future land use maps, and that is also supported by the Idaho Supreme Court. As staff mentioned, there are a number of comments in the public response to this application that it's not rural. We would put forth that it's a rural service center and it's rural by definition. Traffic, there were comments and concerns that this would cause excess traffic congestion, and we've heard from Road and Bridge that the traffic issue is, is not a concern, and likely this use will capture bypass or pass by traffic and potentially reduce trips on Dufer Road to Priest River and over to 95. We heard that it's out of the character for the area. We'll put forth that it's typical of other rural areas in Bonner County. Higher density exists throughout the local area, adjacent to, to and in proximity to this site, which are also zoned rural 5. We heard this was spot zoning. This is on the edge of recreational zone land and aligned with the vision of the ordinance. We heard that it's commercial and it's too excessive for the rural character. However, the applicant has signed his agreement, in agreement with a development agreement to restrict the uses, to prohibit the most intensive uses. And we've heard that it's not aligned with a comp plan. You've heard from me, and I'll put forth that this is not a legal requirement per Idaho code or Idaho Supreme Court cases. The map is aspirational and subjective. And finally, that utilities are insufficient. We'll show that we have gone down the path to provide clarification on the sufficiency of utilities. Subject parcel, we're all familiar with it by now, residential 5 zone, 11 acres on the corner of Dufer and Bay. Conceptual drawing of what the applicant hopes to and aspires to develop on the site. The rationale for this is that services are over 12 miles away to the east on 95 and nine miles plus to the west to Priest River. We're all familiar with the site. This is looking north on Bay. This is at the intersection of Bay and Dufer, looking west, and this is looking east, southeast along Dufer. First and foremost, the subject parcel is across the road from recreational zone property and looking up Bonner County Revised Code 12 327, rural service center districts are established to promote the development, promote of local commercial services in small communities to meet the needs of rural residents as well as limited tourist commercial services. It's our opinion that the rural service center was designed exactly to be placed adjacent to a growing, emerging resort and recreational area. So we look at, is the rest, request consistent with the rural land use pattern in Bonner County? So you saw similar slides from me at the comp plan amendment. We're now in the zoning. So up Priest River, we've got rural service center abutting Ag Forest 10 and Ag Forest 20 and Forest 40. So that would suggest that there's precedent, and it is the character of our rural atmosphere in Bonner County. Southern Priest Lake, we've got numerous other areas of rural service center, both abutting Rural 5 and Rural 10 up around the northeast of this image and then down by And then over in Clarkport, rural service center abutting Rural 5 and Ag Forest 20. For the record, the point is that rural service center is customary and typically dispersed across Bonner County, adjacent and abutting to Rural 5 zones. The subject parcel is just below the red polygonish shape here. That purple dot in the center of the green is a rural service center surrounded by Ag Forest, two mile-ish south of the subject property. So a quick is it rural analysis, the definition from the U.S. Census defines rural as any population, housing, or territory not in an urban area. And there are two types of urban areas. The first is urbanized areas over 50,000 people, and the second is urban clusters with 25, at least 2,500, but fewer than 50,000. By the U.S. Census, the subject area is rural. Bonner County Revised Code 12 327, Rural Service Center District, this is your definition. It's for in a rural area, which this is defined as, and it's established to promote the development of local commercial services in small communities to meet the needs of rural residents as well as limited tourist and commercial services. That is expressly what we are here to request today, to rezone this to rural service center, to allow the community to have service needs and to meet the needs of the adjacent tourist commercial services. Point out as well in this definition that the uses in the zone are appropriate in areas that are served at the time of development by adequate water disposal and sewer. So is it located, located in a community? For your code, it's established promote development of a local commercial service in its small communities to meet the needs of residents. And is it characteristic of the area? Is it consistent with the maintenance of the rural character of the area? Community defined by Webster, the people with common interests living in a particular area, a group of people with common characteristics or interests living together in a larger society. So I think that we would agree that this is a community. So when we look at this community in proximity to the subject parcel, we've got 17 subdivisions, hundreds of homes, dozens and dozens on lots lower than the Rural 5 would allow. When we look at a demographic analysis of the area in vicinity of the subject parcel, we see that there are over 550 people. We've got 12 businesses, 94 employees. So by all definition, the character of this area is mixed with businesses and numerous residents. We look about a mile west of the subject parcel, or two miles west of the subject parcel, we've got a subdivision zoned Rural 5 on the north side of Dufer, adjacent to the river, Mountain View subdivision. The majority of lots in that parcel in that subdivision are less than three quarters of an acre. When we look just a mile west of the subject parcel, we have Birch Beauty Estates, also zoned Rural 5. The lots in Birch Beauty Estates are numerous, and most of them are less than two acres, some as small as 0.52 acres. Again, this is the character of the Rural 5 zone of the area. When we look to the northeast, we've got River Ford subdivision. Lots in that subdivision zoned Rural 5 are two and a half acres. To the north of that, along the river, we've got another subdivision, I forget the name, numerous lots in that subdivision below the Rural 5 designation and minimum lot size. To touch on water and sewer, we connect, connected with Panhandle Health, get their advisement on a public water system. They advise that we collect or connect with a engineer or hydrogeologist to determine the availability and viability of a public water system. We did that clear water engineering, did a well feasibility study. There are five domestic wells within a third of a mile. The average water depth's 100 feet and average yield 28 gallons per minute. Based on the characteristics, is recommended that the applicant, the applicant apply for a new public water system. Panhandle Health came out and did some test holes to look at the sewer suitability for a potential large soil absorption system or community system. All test pits appeared suitable for standard septic systems. So some historical decision making, must a zone change mirror the exact colors of the future land use map? As I stated in a previous hearing, the Idaho Supreme Court has emphasized repeatedly, a comprehensive plan is not a legally controlling zoning law. It does not require zoning decisions to strictly conform to the land use designations of the comprehensive plan map. In this case, Love versus the city of Brigham, Brighamham City, the court sided with the county emphasizing that the rezone did not need to be in exact performance of the county's comprehensive plan. And further in Ferguson, it was accepted to adopt a zoning classification in conflict with the comprehensive plan. I bring that up today because what we have, I think we're all aware, is a comp plan designation that was not changed, but we do have a zoning recommendation to Rural Service Center. They don't align the comp plan and the Rural Service Center, but they don't have to per Idaho Supreme Court cases. Bonner County has consistently acted on this type of request. File ZC 34511, the applicant requested Rural 5 to suburban despite the fact the comp plant was not suburban. It was a reasoned decision and the county approved it. In that staff report, it said governing bodies as a matter of law are not required to zone the land as it appears on the land use map, citing some of the case law I just mentioned. So B C, Bonner County has historically found that zone changes without comp plant map alignment are in accordance with the broad interpretation, goals, and policies and facts of the whole When we look at the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, it emphasizes this, the proposed land use, this is from 61, matrix below, lists general uses and characteristics of each of the map designation. Since the map covers 1.1 million acres, the map is general in nature. Forgivens Persley, expert land use legal firm in the state, they go on to state that the goals of the land use plan are best implemented not by direct application of the plan to a land use decision, but by the adoption of a zoning ordinance or other ordinances. So the comp plan is not prescriptive, it's not a regulatory document, and it should not be used to restrict property rights. What they're saying here is you need to focus on the ordinance, and the ordinance is the tool that does that, and that brings us into the Rural Service Center ordinance and the purpose, promote the development of local commercial services in small communities to meet the needs of rural residents as well as tourist commercial services. And that's what the Bonner County Zoning Commission found, that this request was in accord with the ordinance and the comp plan. Go over this briefly. The requested use is arguably far less intensive than many uses allowed in the Rural 5 zones such as a meat processing plant, cell towers, fur farms, rock crushing, and shooting ranges. On December 29, 2022, the Board of County Commissioners did hear this case. They remanded it back to planning and the planning department for an application to a comp plan amendment and an update of the development agreement with more detail. The applicant has satisfied the second there. We've updated the development agreement, strictly restricting the uses on the property to mini mart-ish and boat storage and single family residence. Going to go through some findings of facts. First, Idaho Code 676511, local land use law states the governing board shall analyze proposed changes to zoning ordinance to ensure that they are not in conflict with the policies of the adopted comprehensive plan. Not in conflict. Rural Residential Service Center is, its purpose is to promote the development of local commercials, commercial services. Promote means to help bring something such as an enterprise into being. So your own ordinance says in the rural areas, this zone is encouraged to promote commercial Bonner County Revised Code 12 320 dash one, zoning district maps and designations, purpose, the purpose statement for each zone shall be used to guide the application of zones and the designations to all lands in an unincorporated Bonner County. So your own code, your own comp plan says, look at the purpose statement. And again, we go to the purpose statement, 12 327, Rural Service Center, to promote the development of local commercial services in small communities to meet the needs of rural residents as well as limited tourist commercial service, consistent with the maintenance of the rural character of the area. And for the record, I've defined what the rural character of this area looks like and feels like. Finding of fact, section 2.5, land use, staff says the proposed zone change from Rural 5 to Rural Service Center is compatible with this goal as the proposal fits with the economic growth of Bonner County. Section 2.6, natural resources, staff says the impacts to natural resources were not identified by agencies for this proposal, though it's not in conflict. Section 2.7, hazardous areas, staff says that the subject property is not located in a map flood plain. The parcel does not contain map slopes. Furthermore, the parcel is afforded emergency services. Section 2.8, public services, facilities, and utilities, staff, the proposed proposal was sent to agencies that provided the above services. Agencies that did respond express that this proposal would not overburden the current level of service, services provided in their coverage area. 2.9, transportation, staff's response was that the intersection is reasonably safe in its current state. 210, recreation, staff confirmed recreation opportunities offered in Bonner County will still be available if the property will be rezoned from Rural 5 to Rural Service Center. Special area sites, staff says the goal appears unaffected by this application. Housing, staff states the proposal is not intended to contribute to housing inventory. However, the Rural Service Center zoning designation does allow for a variety of housing types that can provide adequate shelter for all regardless of age, income, or physical abilities. Community design, staff's response was rezoning the property will align with similar land use designations in the immediate vicinity. The proposal is adjacent to higher density residential developments and near other property zone, Rural Service Center. And then finally, finding of facts, October 20, 2022, your zoning commission found and adopted a motion finding that the proposal and the request is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Revised Code. And I note the recommendation for approval. Including remarks, the subject property sits across the street from a large resort community comp plan, map, recreation zoned area. The requested zone change will serve residents of the community, potentially reducing traffic and trips on Dufer. The subject property is serviced by public services and can provide utilities. Many in the community support the requests. The characteristic of this community in the vicinity of the subject parcel is not Rural 5. Staff report analysis confirms compliance with the general and specific objectives of the comp plan, and the Idaho Supreme Court has ruled on similar issues supporting position we have put forth. Thank you. Any questions? Be happy to enter if you have.
Mr. Hammond? Want to speak? Okay. All right. It's this time, we will go with those that are in favor of, and so, Aaron.
So, Karen Hammond. Is that all you wanted?
You have to come to the left then.
So, to make this easier, I need a volunteer. Mr. Hampton, you will be the mic man. Okay, grab the mic and take it to her, and that'll save everybody a walk. You get your exercise, and you're probably the most unbiased person I know. You might as well say yes.
Yes, I approve of the zoning thing. Progress is coming, things. Thank you.
And thank you. Uh, next one will be Larry Omenson. Hold your hand up so he'll know where you're at, and he'll bring you the mic. Say Larry. Name for the record, when you get it.
And so, the mic doesn't amplify it for people on the internet, so can you speak louder so that we can hear you on your own, please?
That's all right. Karen? No, we don't. Okay. All right, the next one for is... Deb Jackson.
For the record, I'm Deb Jacobson. I continue in support of the Hammond rezone. I'm for a small gas station or a little store, and I look all and down Doofert, and there is nothing to provide for that. And as far as the properties and concerns, there's a lot of properties, not judging anybody, but stuff is all over the place, and this is not the Hammond way. And foremost, I'm just ready for our entire community to get along with one another and enjoy what a beautiful place that we live in. Thank you very much.
For the record, Mr. Rick Jacobson. In favor of the zone change. And there's been a lot of conversation, infamous ministers as well, about leakage of the tanks and so on and so forth, and Googling information about leakage from gas tanks. It seems like there's rules in place to, we're concerned, people, to understand that if this was to be adopted, that the tanks are subject to inspections yearly, and also every three years, they check the tanks themselves. So, I feel like the services is much needed. I'm in support.
Thank you. Perez. Kimman? Perez?
Hi, Kim Perez, and I am in support of this, and I echo what has already been said.
Thank you. And Il Van den Broeck. 150, 50, you got it, I got that right.
Linda Van den Broeck, and I am in support of this. It would be so nice to have a gas station with gas prices the way they are, a little bit closer that I don't have to drive 20 miles round trip to get gas. And a little store would be great too. I'm in favor.
Randy Banks.
Hello. I moved to Segal about seven years ago, been a North Idaho resident for about 35 years. And unfortunately, I've seen the growth here, and it's starting to upset me, but the fact is, I usually kept my boat more at Willough Bay, and this year I went to Willough Bay and put it in Willough Bay, not knowing there wasn't any gas available nearby. And I drove the road yesterday, day before yesterday, down to Priest River to get some fuel and some other necessities, and I just couldn't believe that road is just, I don't know if you've all driven it in the winter, but I just imagined, I hadn't driven it in the winter, but there's no guardrails along the river there hardly at all. A lot of curds, I'm sure there's going to be ice buildup hazards everywhere, and I thought, if I lived out in that area, I'd want something a little more convenient than going eight miles to appreciate it. I'm in support of this project.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else for? Yes, sir.
Well, my name is Duane Wentz. I live very close to that vicinity. I support the project completely. It appears to meet the rules and regulation laws of the county and state, and I think it was a very good idea to have it there because it takes traffic away from both directions on Doofert West. And I agree with whatever everybody else said. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other for?
My name is Jeff Huden for the record. So, we've all seen growth. Growth is coming. There've been a lot of people in this valley for 150 years, and they've all changed the face of this valley and the area that we're talking about right here. None of this was here 100 years ago. So, and this, the gas station or the boat parking or whatever it may turn into, I think is the style that we're looking for. It's not a Maverick Station. It's not a Walmart. It's not a huge facility. It is something convenient for the neighbors, everybody in this room pretty much, and I think it is in good taste, right? And for this rezone.
Any more for?
And to hoteling?
It doesn't amplify.
Can you hear me? And I live at Willough Bay, and I'm for this. Well, I don't have as much more to add other than there's a lot of emotion and a lot of hearsay and a lot of other things are going on, and I would just ask that you stick to the facts and the law and just make a measured decision based on that.
Any more for? Okay, now into the rezone of neutral. Nobody claiming neutral today. Okay. So, we are not going to go in a prescribed order and eliminate that possibility that was mentioned, but Mr. Smanko will go first on the post.
So, just correct me if I'm wrong. What Mr. Grimm said was mixing the different opinions together, because what's the difference if we mix what I, drawing the mic back to the end? Because he said usually you would mix it up so it wasn't all one direction, which is what our rules are. Why would we make this last longer?
Just eliminate the possibility of that actually, so, go ahead, Norm.
If I could have raised that. My name is Norm Smanko. I'm attorney for a number of the folks that are opposed to this proposed zone change. My address is 800 West Main Street in Boise, although I spend about half my time hanging out with my granddaughter in Coeur d'Alene, which I was glad to do last night. The board has the authority to run the meeting how it wants to. That's what allows you to limit people to three minutes, which by the way, I'm not limited to three minutes, right? Okay. And the order that people are going to go in, so, you know, with all due respect, Mr. Grimm is not qualified or authorized to practice law in the state of Idaho, so I think you might want to talk with your attorney about that, but I, you did something similar on the 14th of this month. You asked for people who are adjacent or abutting the property to speak first, and nobody objected to that. So, I just note that for the record. Uh, I wanted to start with the Sandpoint Reader article from December 21st, which reported on this board remanding unanimously a zone, the zone change application back to the planning department to apply for a comprehensive plan amendment. And at that hearing, according to the reader, Commissioner McDonald noted, quote, "Let's remand it back to the planning department. Have the applicant file for a comp plan map amendment. That way, it's clean, there's less potential that county legal counsel has to jump through hoops to defend it in court." End quote. Why was the commissioner concerned about that? I think it's going to be evident as I talk through this. First of all, at your public hearing and decision on June 14th, the request to change the comp plan designation for the subject property from rural residential to neighborhood commercial was denied. When you did that, you made a decision as required under your code pursuant to Bonner County Revised Code 12-216, and that required you to determine whether there was adequate evidence that the proposal is in accordance with the general and specific objectives of the comp plan. And you decided at that hearing on a two to one vote that it was not, and therefore it was denied. You have the exact same question under the exact same code provision today. Is this proposal in accordance with the general and specific objectives of the comp plan? That would be difficult to come to a different conclusion factually, which is what's required than what was decided under the comp plan amendment. Under Bonner County Revised Code 12-216, two things are required to approve the zone change application, and I only heard one of them from the applicant's representative, and that's number one. Number one, which I already mentioned, is that adequate evidence that the proposal's in accordance with the general and specific objectives of the comp plan. The rezone must be denied because it is in conflict with the comp plan. Idaho Code Section 676511 Sub 2C requires that. For example, and you'll hear much more obviously factual testimony from folks, under the specific provisions of the comp plan, higher densities are to be in the boundaries of sewer and water areas, which this is not, and development is to be placed where services are located, which this is not, and the rural character of the area is to be retained. Prime farmland is to be preserved. The proposed zone change does not conform to these provisions of the comp plan and others that you're going to hear about this afternoon, as further supported by testimony and comments. Why is this number one important? Well, you heard a number of Supreme Court cases mentioned earlier, and I want to talk about some of those. And I do want to say, with all due respect to Mr. Grimm, he is neither qualified or authorized to express legal opinions to you. When you read a Supreme Court opinion and you purport to explain what that means as applied to the facts of another case, that is practicing law. Mr. Grimm is not authorized to do that, and I would ask him to take that into account before his rebuttal. "The practice of law is the application of legal principles and judgment with regard to the circumstances or objectives of a person that require the knowledge and skill of a person trained in the law." When you start reading Supreme Court opinions and saying what you think they mean is applied to the facts of a particular case, that is practicing law. An unauthorized practice of law means a practice of law without being duly qualified to do so, as prohibited by statute, court rule, or case law of the state. I'm not going to stand up here and pretend to be a planner. I'm not authorized or qualified to do that, and I would ask that Mr. Grimm not practice law unauthorized in front of you by expressing what he thinks Supreme Court opinion means. Notwithstanding that, I'm going to tell you what these Supreme Court opinions mean. And they make a lot of sense. The first one is the Balzer versus Tooten County case, 1986 Supreme Court case, where the county, Tooten County, denied a rezone. And the argument of the applicant was very simple. Hey, look, this is already on a comp plan amendment. It's already showing as industrial on the map, so you've got to grant me the rezone of industrial. It should just be automatic. And the district court agreed with that, said, "It's just a ministerial duty. If you've already got it on the map, it's industrial, then you've got to allow it to be zoned as industrial." The Supreme Court said, "No. The comp plan does not take precedent over existing ordinance, and existing ordinances and the statutes require that you determine whether the proposed use is consistent with the goals of the comp plan." And in that particular set of circumstances, the Tooten County Commissioners decided, "No. It does not conform with the ordinances or with the comp plan," and the Supreme Court upheld that factual determination. That's obviously not the issue here. You actually had a comp plan amendment in front of you. Current comp plan designation doesn't authorize this type of use. Tried to change it, it didn't get changed. None of these cases I'm going to talk about have a situation where they first came in for a comp plan amendment, got it denied, and then boom, they got the rezone in. Not the case. The second case I want to talk about is Ferguson, which is a Peta County case, also 1986. The commissioners granted a rezone, and the bottom line of this one was, even though it was zoned agricultural or residential, whatever it was, they wanted it to be commercial. Everyone else at the intersection was commercial, and as the court observed, the property was an island of nonconforming, it was an island in a sea of nonconforming uses. There was no, in fact, it was already commercial, and it was reasonable for the county to decide that. Again, not a case where a comp plan was denied and they went ahead and allowed the rezone in. And finally, in Evans versus Keaton County, the court very clearly said, and it's not unauthorized practice of law to read as a Supreme Court case, right? I want to be clear on that. The in accordance language in the statute doesn't require zoning decisions to strictly conform to the land use designations in the comp plan, but the board cannot ignore the comp plan. It's a question of fact, which you exercise that discretion of making a factual finding at your June 14th hearing as well. Also, the court construes a local ordinance as it construes a statute, and this is incredibly important, by its plain meaning. Now, we're not talking about the comp plan, we're talking about your local ordinances. The use didn't violate the county code. That's not the case here. It's exactly the opposite. All right, so we talked about number one. It must be consistent with the comp plan. That's going to be largely a factual determination, similar to the one you made on the comp plan amendment. Number two, the zone change proposal, this is also out of 12216. This doesn't apply to comp plan amendments, but it applies to zoning changes. The zone change proposal must be consistent with Chapter 12, Subchapter 3.2. What does that mean? People's eyes believe that when you see stuff like that. Chapter 12, Subchapter 3.2. That subchapter specifies that the use of the rural service center zone is appropriate in areas designated as neighborhood commercial, which was denied by the board on June 14th, resort community, or transitioned by the comp plan. This is in your code. Okay, so if we go back to the Evans case, the Keaton County case, not only did the court look at, is the proposed zone change consistent with the goals of the comp plan, factual determination, it also went on to look at, is the proposed zone change in accord or consistent with, does it comply with the county code? And it went through that analysis separately from the comp plan. You're awarded to set up the same way. Do the comp plan analysis, and for a zone change, it must also be consistent with Chapter 12, Subchapter 3. 12, Subchapter 3.2. Why else would the Commissioners have remanded this, to do a comp plan amendment, if a comp plan amendment wasn't even necessary? It is necessary because it's only appropriate in those three kinds of designated areas. From that same subchapter, the purposes statements for each zone and each map designation shall be used to guide the application of the zones and designations to all lands. That's in 12-320.1. And then again, in 12-327B, use of this zone, rural service center, is appropriate in areas designated as neighborhood commercial, nine on the 14th of this month, resort community, or transitioned by the comp plan. The staff report recognized that these requirements exist and makes the key finding, quote, "Use of the rural service center zone is appropriate in areas designated as neighborhood commercial, resort community, or transitioned by the comp plan." It goes on to say, "If the applicant is successful in obtaining the map amendment," which the applicant is not, "then, only then, should the applicant move forward to satisfy the other requirements of the code." So under both of these provisions in 12-216, the rezone has to be denied. This is not changed by the proposed use of a development agreement. The development agreement cannot be used to waive or eliminate the requirements of your code, including 12-327B. The zone change must still be appropriate under the two criteria I just mentioned. The development agreement just adds another level of protection. It is a discretionary tool for the Board, but only in cases where the zone change can otherwise be approved. And you can see that clearly in Section 12-901. The county must approve the zone change, which it can't do under the criteria, including 12-327B, before it concerns itself with what additional conditions and protections they may want to put in the development agreement. One other thing I wanted to mention, my good friends at Givens First Lee do have a tremendously thick book that you can read. And looking at the language that was put on the screen, "The comp plan should not be used to deny an application." That's what it said, "Which otherwise satisfies the requirements of the county code." Got to look at the whole code. And clearly, under 12-216, both of those criteria need to be satisfied, including the appropriate designated area as recognized in your code in 12-327B. Neither of the criteria for consideration of the zone change were met. Nothing about the development agreement process changes that. The result of the proposed zone change must be denied. Approval of the zone change will most certainly result in judicial review by the State District Court, and in my opinion, reversal of your decision. Law and fact, which is what you need to apply here, indicate that this application should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Wood. And the microphone is this gentleman right here. And we're going to go down the road, so we're going to change the order up. We're going to go this way and that way. And that way, that will protect both sides from any accusation of having a response, blah, 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 blah. So we're just going to eliminate that possibility.
My name is Gabe Mollmar. I live on Jewel Lake Road, and I'm giving my three minutes to Jennifer Galloway.
My name is Deborah Raboka. My house is on Dufrut Road, a half mile from the proposal. And I'm giving my time to Vic Reed.
My name is Pam Miller, and I oppose the zone change, and I am giving my time.
My name is Rodney Williams. I reside at 5124 Vay Road, approximately 200 feet to the south of the Hammond property. I am very much opposed to this zoning change. I will experience adverse impacts if this is approved, such as increased and decreased noise, traffic, lighting impact. There is no adequate evidence that proposal is in accordance with the general, specific objective and the comprehensive plan. And since no neighborhood commercial map change was approved, please deny this zone
My name is Eric Miller. I'm at the party residing at 90 Holmes Road. My property is Lot 2 on Holmes Road, directly west of the Hammond property. The reason I purchased my property was the cost of this zone, the rural residential, and is surrounded by like зoned properties. I would not have purchased my residence, residential property next to a commercial property. If approved, the value of my property will diminish. My gravest concern is with the rezone Hammond property is, any commercial business will encourage loitering, result in more human and car traffic, increase in crime, and create a risk to my well water. In addition, there will be negative impacts from lighting required to run a business and provide business security. The adopted Bonner County Comprehensive Plan Property Rights Policy states, "The property rights of the applicant adjoining and nearby landowners and future generations should be considered, as well as the short term and long term consequences of decisions." This applicant is not being denied the use of his property as currently allowed in Bonner County Code. If you approve this file, I will suffer the negative impacts. I oppose this amendment.
Now, my name is Dan Schmitz. I reside at Ben Morris Road, approximately a quarter of a mile from the property. I'm opposed to this development service. And I just donate the rest of my time to George Lustelaid, so he gets ready to talk.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Ross, and I live about three miles from the property being reviewed. My wife and I have both timber and grow hay, or say, on the property. We actually put two pieces of property together, 130 acres that could be together. We are definitely opposed to the gas station and...
You want to speak up a little bit and start the ear back?
Yeah. My wife and I both are definitely opposed to the project for a number of reasons. So I do think it's increased, will increase the traffic. There are accidents on that corner. They haven't been recorded, maybe with the county, but we have many, many accidents that people can tell you about that, out in that area, we just help people get on the road. They get stuck in the winter time, and a logging truck comes by and throws the chain out and gets them out. Nothing's reported. So I'd like to donate the rest of my time to Diane Macalusi.
What do you want to say?
Well, they're right there. If they want to speak, catch them while we got the mic there.
Diane Fuller. Briefing. I don't like half truths, which it appears you got some of those. And I've lived rural property over 40 years, except for the rare occasion, if we're doing maintenance, weed eating, and run out of gas, will we make a trip to get gas? Otherwise, I've never left my house to go get gas and come home. I've always left my house. Maybe I'll get gas because I'm going to the store, we're going to go see someone. So the idea that you're traveling 18 miles to get gas, to me, seems kind of mute. That's my opinion. And the other thing, I am a residential appraiser. I have not done a lot of appraisals in Idaho yet. But when I practiced in California, my specialty was rural property. And there is definitely a change in the value. If I had to do an appraisal, and I didn't mention that the parcel next to my house that I'm appraising was next to commercial property, I would be in jeopardy of not doing a legal appraisal, because it does affect the value. And the other thing I'm concerned with, you know, one gas station, it would be convenient. It's not an issue. It's once you do a variance, then how are you going to deny the next one that wants it? And then you've changed the whole character of the neighborhood. Those are my concerns.
Hi. My name is Judd Conley. I live at 54 Elton Avenue, and I'm opposed to this project. So I'm going to give my minutes to Karen Kelly.
I'm Sharon Monahan. And I live about three miles from the site. And we have, our family has spent the last year just putting in a septic system, and four acres was barely enough to have that thing legally done with the county. And we have spent a lot of time stressing and praying and trying to get this thing through properly. So I'm looking down at this, and I'm thinking, they showed a nice picture that showed a nice little gas station and a couple of buildings, but they failed to mention the five houses that were brought up at the last meeting, and where those are going to go. And I just can't imagine that 11 acres can withhold a septic system or a gas station and five houses, when ours on four was barely eligible. And ours is on the side that's recreational, and most of what was mentioned was all in recreational areas, not in the rural areas. So I just can't imagine how they can suddenly pick one area out and change it, and I am opposed to this happening. I'd like to donate any extra time I have to Larry Macalusi.
My name is Robbie Hampton. For the record, I live at 121 Birch Beauty. I'm about two miles away from the project, and I do oppose this project. And I, my opinion is, we don't need this now. We don't need this today. I donate the rest of my time to Karen Kelly.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Mock. My wife and I live at 188 Tree Top Lane, which is about a mile from the proposed locations. I'm concerned about community design, harming of property rights, the protection of rural areas in Bonner County. I find the proposed zone change at odds with the, with community design, will impact property rights of adjoining property owners, and will diminish the rural character of Dufrut Quarter. Those of us who live in this quarter treasure the rural setting that is home. It is a quality of life issue, and we freely choose to live here at a distance from urban services. There are statements in this application that misrepresent an attempt to make the adjoining area seem like it's more densely populated than it is. The applicant states that parcel to the east is five acres and is a church. That's on the application. That's patently false. Parcel east across Vay Road is 120 acres and is used as pasture and forest land. Another false statement on the application is that the parcels to the north across Dufrut Road are one acre. In fact, the parcels to the north are 7.6 acres and 13.4 acres, and are respectively open space and pasture. Further, the 7.6 acre parcel is within the crossings at Willow Bay. And it was designed to be open space as a buffer to the R5 zoning to the east and south at the time that development was approved. Community design is another issue. The fact of the matter is, there's already a commercial, there's already commercial zoning in the immediate area. There is a rural service center that is less than one mile away and roughly 25 acres in size, and it is 96% undeveloped. The zone change application for this single isolated parcel in light of the nearby rural service center would be poor community design, be at odds with the comprehensive plan, and possibly constitute spot zoning. When the present application was before the Bonner County Zoning Commission, that commission failed to abide by Idaho Code 67-6511 Paragraph C, which states that the proposed zoning ordinances are not, should not be in conflict with the adopted comprehensive plan. On December 21st of 2022, the Bonner County Board of Commissioners caught the zoning commission error, and by unanimous vote, required the applicant to seek a comp plan map amendment prior to acting on the zoning application. On March 23rd, 2023, the Bonner County Planning Commission voted six to zero to deny the applicant's comprehensive plan map amendment. And finally, this Board on June 14th voted two to one to uphold the planning commission denial of this applicant's comp plan. In each case, the conclusions of law were that, by the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners, was that this application was not in accord with property rights, economic development, community design, public services, and land use. Nothing has changed regarding this application. The same conclusions of law still apply, and I respectfully ask that this vote, this Board, vote to deny the zone change application before. Thank you.
To Joe Mock. Mock. Joe Mock.
I'm going to use it.
Oring Patterson for the record. The Hammond parcel was bought with the knowledge that it was a rural five acres. The comprehensive plan is not fuzzy and watercoated, but is clear as it is intended to be. Dufrut is an arterial, which means it demarcates the different zones as established by the comprehensive plan and map. All the lots that are adjacent to the south of Dufrut, all of them from 95 to Crease River, are only forest, agriculture, or rural. Thus, the, oh, also, the recent subarea planning committee reinforced the need to preserve these rural areas. So this is against the comprehensive plan map and could fundamentally change the character of this area. It does not reinforce the rural character. We live two miles from this property, and since West Bonner County School District didn't provide agency comment, we go to almost all of the school board meetings. And I'd like to read, "Bonner County Implementation Goals of Schools, Facilities, and Transportation." Number one, the county shall keep current with school capacity and transportation issues associated with growth and development. Number two, Bonner County shall examine the impacts to the school system by land use proposals as committed by Idaho Code. Koodoo Valley is one of the longest and most difficult school bus routes for West Bonner County School District. Presently, that bus, they allow one bus, and it is full. This year, they did not pass the levy, and they have budgets, which they say will not allow them to continue their previous schedule for buying buses. So they are not buying a bus this year. If higher density housing is allowed, like these one acre lots, this would complicate this issue significantly. So I would like to see better cooperation between planning and our schools, so planners will have baseline data to assist in the review of land use proposals. Please do not pass the zone change.
My name is Shannon McGlocklin. I live off of Vay Road, and I'm opposed to this, and I'd like to donate the rest of my time to the county.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Bynum, and I live at 10300 Dufrut Road, about a quarter of a mile from the applicant's property, just about where one of the Memorial Day traffic counts are taken. Mr. Hammond's property, so close to my land, proposed changes would ruin my rural landscape. I have talked to Mr. Hammond a few times, and he told me he wanted to build homes for his wife and daughter on that property. When he bought the land for my brother, it wasn't long before Mr. Hammond filed a rezone, he rezoned the property in June of 2022. Although not ever presented to the public, Mr. Grimm had submitted to planning an aggressive aspirational plan for that property. We also have been shown conceptual design. Pretty as a picture, but it's just that, pictures. Dufrut Road has always separated myself and my neighbors from the recreational use along the river. It must remain that way, rural, please. I am very concerned about more traffic, trash, people hanging out, or trespassing on my property. Water quality, increased crime rates, taxes. My property is my most valuable asset. Zoning is a reflection of the identity of our area. Commercial development in smaller lots would not be good news for my property value. A zone change will reflect the rural character myself and neighbors cherish, and I ask that you deny this request. And I ask that you deny this request. And I give the rest of my time up to Karen Kelly.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandy Sparling, and I live just 300 feet from Mr. Hammond's property at 9671 Dufrut Road. I thank you for the opportunity to oppose files ZC-0012-22. Our property is zoned R5, and we purchased it in an R5 area trusting. Bonner County would protect and uphold that. Let's not confuse why we bought there. We sunk our life savings into rural property so we would not have to live next to a gas station, convenience market, or boat storage. All 10 people who spoke today in favor of believe they need conveniences not provided in rural areas. If that's the case, perhaps they should have purchased property in more urban areas of the county. Property rights is a two-way street. Mr. Hammond's application states he has a passion for development. He has done a significant amount of development in various areas, and to accomplish that, he has had to understand codes and zoning. He is a professional developer. This rezone application certainly is not his first rodeo. I feel he purchased the corner of Bay and Dufrut Roads because it was a piece of inexpensive rural land, knowing it was zoned R5. I feel it was never his intent to build a home for himself or his family. I feel it was his intention to buy it, rezone it for his personal profit, and pull the wool over the eyes of his rural neighbors without regard to their property rights while hoping they were not sharp enough to oppose his actions. Mr. Proper, Mr. Hammond's property rights, like mine, are very important. He has every right to divide it into two five-plus acre lots under the current R5 zoning code, and build two homes for his family or for profit. By doing that, he would have the support and blessings of his rural neighbors. However, if this zone change is approved, my property rights, as well as that of several others, will be violated according to the property rights objective under land use in the comprehensive plan Title 12. It is also likely our property will depreciate. No evidence is available showing the impact to my property has been or will be evaluated. If this rezone is approved and Mr. Hammond does build a gas station at the dangerous intersection of Bay and Dufrut, more accidents can be expected. Jeremy Grimm stated, "One can see clearly for a quarter mile coming from the west on Dufrut Road." I physically measured it, and it's only 821 feet. A gas station harms me by living with noise, lights, jake brakes, traffic, and a strong chance of increased crime and dealing of drugs. The rural residents of R5 area do not need or want what Mr. Hammond professes we do. I ask you, please deny this rezone application. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Garwood. I am a directly affected party. My five-acre parcel connects directly to Hammond's 11-acre parcel. We border each other near Holmes Road. I'm an attorney. I've been practicing law for 25 years. I'm a criminal prosecutor. And I reviewed the file. I reviewed the proposed changes. And I see, in my view, that new requirements under Idaho Code, Idaho Code Section 67-6511 and Bonner County Ordinances 12-211, 12-215, do not, his proposal does not meet the requirements under those code provisions. This proposal does not conform with the comprehensive map and plan. It negatively affects my adjacent property. It's incompatible with adjoining land uses, and it will produce noise, and lights, and odors, and fumes, and vibrations on our adjoining land. His proposal lacks necessary public services, as this board found previously, and his proposal will inevitably decrease my adjoining land value and the quality of life in our rural areas. My property is designated Rural 5. All surrounding properties to his lot are Rural 5, Rural 10, and Agricultural. Hammond's lot is currently Rural 5 land designation. It does not support Rural Services Center and the designated zone change he is requesting. His proposal, in fact, is inappropriate to his land designation and the comprehensive man, map and plan. Hammond has failed to demonstrate sufficient evidence that his proposal is in accordance with the general and specific objectives of the land, the land comprehensive plan. In fact, he cannot do so given the comprehensive map and plan in place. He proposes a gas station, commercial boat storage, and five homes on his 11 acres. Such higher density commercial use requires adequate water, sewer, and public services. Hammond lacks all three. According to this board's previous findings in file AM 0002-23, all components of the public services requirements are not established on his parcel. Hammond has made multiple representations of his intent with regard to the land. He told Diane he was gonna build a house for himself and his wife. He later hired, actually almost immediately hired, Whiskey Rock to change that from Rural 5 to Rural Urban Center so he could build a commercial business on that property. He initially said it was a gas station and homes, and later it was a gas station, boat storage, and homes. All of these things negatively impact his credibility. I don't believe Hammond will build homes that face a gas station and put his five-plus family members in those homes. I believe he will build some sort of quote-unquote affordable housing, as he described previously, whatever that might be, and sell it at a profit because he is a developer. If allowed to rezone 11 acres, the reality is Hammond can do whatever he pleases with the property. He's not going to be bound by the proposals and what he's presented to this board. The rezoning will then allow him to build a hotel or other commercial business, or to sell to the highest commercial bidder. If a rezone is permitted, the rural residents will lose. Property values will fall, especially for adjoining landowners like myself. The rural remote lifestyle we enjoy will be ruined, and the risks to me, a rural resident, increased crime, increased fire hazard, gas leakage, fumes, noise, lighting, ground vibrations, traffic, traffic accidents, and the like, will directly negatively impact my property and my property rights. When I purchased my property in a rural area with Rural 5 land designation, I never anticipated having a gas station, a store, and high-density housing directly next door. In fact, I would never have purchased my place knowing such businesses could or would be installed. I bought rural to be rural. I intentionally purchased away from commercial development, to be away from high traffic, large populations, and to enjoy rural areas, wildlife, and to escape the city. Hammond's proposal, if allowed, will obliterate the value of my property, destroy the rural remote lifestyle my kids enjoy. It will jeopardize our property, property rights, our water well. It will increase our, the fumes and such as I've explained that we'd be exposed to as his direct neighbors. A gas station does, if you go below, pose a significant real risk of leakage into the ground, and we are on the well. Our home value is surely to decrease should his proposal be approved. In fact, I likely won't even be able to sell my place if anyone knows that a gas station is going to be connected to the property. Wherever our private road, Holmes Road, has already been used by Hammond and his construction and delivery crews without obtaining prior consent, this is surely to happen again, either intentionally or accidentally, if his proposal is allowed to proceed. Lastly, infrastructure at Dufrut and Bay Road is inadequate to support this proposal. Dufrut and Bay Roads are not controlled by a traffic light, a stop sign, or dedicated turn lanes. I personally know three accidents at that intersection last winter, most notably when a semi truck slid off at Dufrut onto Hammond's parcel. No one wants a semi truck sliding into a gas pump. It's been repeatedly said that we are going to capture bypass traffic and not mark it to increase traffic in the area. That is contrary to common sense. He's going into business to make money, not to lose money. We have a whole bunch of rural residents that will not patronize his establishment should he be allowed to build it. So he's going to have to advertise. He's going to have to bring in traffic just to stay in business. His request fails to meet the requirements under the law. It fails to comply with the comprehensive plan and map, and it absolutely, directly, negatively impacts me and other adjoining landowners. Please deny his request to rezon.
Do you want to send your note? You guys take those now. Or chew that up? Chew that up?
I have provided it before I spoke, my written statement.
Was it true if you wrote a note on the list?
You're good. It's all good.
Um, my name is Kathy Steadman, and I own the property that is to the right of the blue and the building south on the map. And I don't feel like I need to really say too much because my friend here, to my right, pretty much said it all because that all applies to me as well. My property is, is a beautiful five-acre country home site parcels. And they'll be worth nothing if I have to say the entrance to them are located across from the entrance into a service center or boat storage. Nobody, nobody in this room would buy them as homesites. They would only be valuable as commercial property, and, and that would happen over my dead body. So, we don't know. So I, I'm asking you to vote no to preserve the rural lifestyle that we have out there. Um, my family moved back to that area when my grandfather died. I was 10 years old in 1965, and I know about the long bus ride. I attended Southside School, and I spent an hour and a half on the bus each way. So I feel sorry for kids that have a lot of their time eaten up by things like that. So I can identify with that. Um, I would like to donate the rest of my time to Karen Kelly. I'm asking for a no vote on the change.
My name is Roger Spolting. I live directly across on Bay and Dufrut Road on the north side from that property, 9671 Dufrut Road. This proposed change to create a small residential development, commercial buildings will violate my property rights and does not benefit the rural residents as a whole. Now I'm gonna stop to help the three of you understand what this is. All of this property, Mr. Hammond's property, all of this belongs to the lady who spoke. The lady before her, her daughter-in-law, attorney, has this. Mr. Miller has this. My wife and I have this. And in all due respect to him and his family and his six people, that all live in here except the one person that's farthest out and say that on 18 miles of weather. And all due respect to you, we've had this property for many years. And like everybody else in the neighborhood here from, lives from here to here. The lay, the furthest away is on the train line to Dufrut Road. I just want you to understand that you're there. We're not shooting. We're not shooting from the hip. I apologize if you have to hear some of these things that I, you like that one, didn't you? That I said before, but, you know, if it's denied and we have to go to court, it's always to be a member of record, matter of record. I spoke with a real estate agent who strongly advised my property values will decrease significantly if the proposal is approved. In this area, which has been zoned Rural 5, Rural Residential for years, the proposal for 1.01 acres in commercial property defies the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. And thanks to our planning and zoning official that spoke first, I don't have to worry because BRCRC 12-216 states, "Not to approve a zone change application, there must be adequate evidence that the proposal must be in accordance with the specific objectives of a comprehensive plan." It came right out of the county's mouth before we even started. In the current county comprehensive plan, Land Use Chapter 6 describes the density ranges as follows. "One to five acres for areas on or near fringes of a city impact, which may be within fire districts, sewer districts, or water districts." This proposal, not even close to the fringes of a city or within a sewer or water district. Therefore, the application is not compliant with the finer comprehensive plan, which doesn't allow this to be rezoned. Okay. It further defines five to 10 acres for outside the sewer districts but in areas where subsurface sewage disposal can be achieved without adverse, without adverse impact to service your groundwater. That's all of us. The higher density of this proposal is definitely a threat to my groundwater as well as the five-acre residential properties. Now, the, the, the RCR 327 states that Rural Service Center District is designed to provide light commercial uses to serve the needs of the rural community and tourist trade. What else? Without, what Mr. Quinn didn't say is without adversely affecting residential neighborhoods. And if you don't think that's gonna adversely affect the rest of us, I don't know. Um, Jeremy, I'm sorry, but the Rural Service Center in Priest Lake and Clark Fork are properly approved and not at all comparable to the Bay-Dufrut intersection. Um, I really think that if you, if the commissioners would look at that intersection and realized the accidents that have come there were not reported, like the logging truck, like my wife said last time, and Jennifer just explained the accident, what's gonna happen if that rolls into that, into the gas pumps? How about the rest of us around? Well, I won't go on. You've heard from me before. Um, thanks for your efforts, and I'm sorry you have to sit through this again, but that's just the way it is, and I ask that you deny this request.
I'm a fellow politician for the record.
It's on.
It doesn't amplify.
So, uh, it's on. Uh, I'm a fellow politician for the record, and I wish to speak against the change of zoning for this place. Um, it is against the comprehensive plan map. It's a fundamental change to the character of the area. I would point out that this application, as originally presented, the change of, for the change of zoning, from rural residential to the made with commercial, is, the justification for that is that it is, is, the justification is a huge imperative. They claim that the rent is the man's mortgage services. And as should be clear from all this, nothing is more conclusive than the truth. I understand that I'm wrong, not being determined by any of those. But, but the justification for a proposal is that the community wants, and we're the community, that the proposal certainly does not. The planning, well, planning office has a petition of over 500 submissions. You don't want this. Room, or testimonies by DOC Security, that sufficiently points out that their, their proposal, justification that, that we want is not true by, certainly by a law. Um, the residents of five acres or larger do not wish the services which would be allowed by this zone change. So, so the lawyer's comment, one of his five or six of their residents, the population, it would be, it would be that, a, a, so to speak, would be a justification for this, and that's, that's certainly not true. This change, um, would be, if the state of the union should ease interest, it is already available, not as their unwinter statement, two miles away. It is less than one mile away. And two of the parcels in that room were available when they visited the process of buying this one. So, um, so this is therefore a benefit of the tenants only and not the current surrounding residents. And I regret to offer correctly that that's a part of the definition of this. So, uh, so I requested the tenants, um, So, I requested the tenants, you know, to be held to the five-acre minimums that is stoned as right now. Thank you. And if I had to go, I would.
Thanks, Seth.
There's another microphone floating. Can you?
Yes, your turn.
I'm Mary Lee Conley, and I live at 54 Elton Avenue in the Crossing at Willow Bay. We purchased in 2016 when there were approximately 12 existing homes and approximately four to six full-time residents. Now, the count is 53 homes built with approximately 29 full-time residents and approximately 24 part-time snowbirds. At the time we purchased, and the signage was up till way past 2020, the Crossing at Willow Bay's conceptual rendition map included a lovely, large boat storage facility and tennis courts, among other things. Seven years later, we have no boat storage or tennis courts. The Crossing's owner, developer marketed that these accompaniments were in our future as homeowners and as part of the HOA. The conceptual map was just that, a map of what could be but never would be, and we personally believe he never intended to complete the project before he sold and returned to Canada. We are concerned that Hammond's recent conceptual aspirational rendition is a drawing to satiate those concerned of what a gas station, boat storage would look like on rural Dufort Bay. Jeremy displayed photos at the last meeting and today indicating what Hammond could choose to use the property for: a fur farm, cell tower, slaughterhouse, gun club, who knows? There's a whole list of what this project could morph into. This drawing holds no weight nor requires Hammond to have any responsibility or requirement to adhere to it. It's just a drawing. We are against the rezone of the Hammond property, and we ask respectfully that you deny this rezone. Thank you for hearing my concerns. I yield the remainder of my time to Wayne Martin.
First, I'd like to thank the commissioners and county staff for their service and time. My name is Vic Reed. I live at 146 Mary Moody Lane, about one mile from the requested zone change. There are inadequate public services to this property, specifically in the realm of fire services. The county must account for all services that support the development and growth that they are with increased frequency requested to approve. Safety fire services are currently provided to the bare minimum of rural services with an ISO rating of nine to the area of West Dufort Road. Even with the development of water systems as we see in the crossings, the fire service will still need apparatus and staffing to effectively and timely apply that water supply to any structure fire. It is an integrated system, and with current staffing, any one given day, six to eight people, and response times in excess of 13 to 15 minutes for the first arriving units, little can be accomplished other than quick attack, mostly directed at defensive fire operations. This is to protect exposures that might be impacted, excuse me, by a structure on fire. The risk increases with urban or suburban densities that one would see in development like the crossings or the resort at Willow Bay. It is my opinion that the existing densities already pose a problem from a fire safety standpoint. Zoning higher densities seems to only add to this problem. It is clear that without the arrival of additional firefighting capabilities in a timely manner with adequate staffing, an effective firefighting force cannot be applied to a fire emergency. The proposed flows, the fire flows in the development agreement, excuse me, the proposed uses in the development agreement for the property will require fire flows from 750 GPM to in excess of 1,500 GPM and won't be calculated until actual plans are submitted for review to the Fire Service Agency. One of the clarifications I would ask for is in the county staff report, it says there's 10,000 square foot of boat storage for 11 acres, but I note that the development agreement divides the lot into nine parcels. Three one-acre parcels with boat storage, is each one-acre parcel allowed to have 10,000 square feet of boat storage, in which case, for clarity, that would mean 30,000 square feet of boat storage as opposed to 10,000. And I don't know the answer to that, but I would like to have county staff clarify if possible. Idaho has adopted the International Fire Code and is the minimum and maximum code that can be applied to any development. The fire flows, to be fair, can be addressed or lessened with enhanced fire protection construction and fire sprinkler installations at an increased cost to developer and would require extreme water storage. It appears that the county has no built-in markers or response standards that would call out when fire services must be expanded to meet the needs of a developing county beyond low-density residential development. Bonner County staff report in section 2.8 states that the goal, future development shall not provide, shall provide, excuse me, adequate services and should not adversely impact the services or utilities of present-day users. Although contacted, Selkirk Fire had no comment on the zone change. However, the current development agreement with Hammond was not included in the September 13th, 2022 request for comments. Have the agencies been notified of the change and allowed to provide any relevant comments based on this new information? Speaking with Chief Gilchrist, the answer would be no, as he's just recently been made aware of the development agreement. I would ask the planning staff if a new request should be sent out to those agencies for comment, understanding that they did not have the development agreement before them. So, does the zone change adversely impact current services? It's really not too hard to say no when such a low bar has been placed before us to jump over. However, if we're doing the limbo, maybe it does. I would not support this zoning change.
My name is Ron Friedland, and I reside at 4305 Bay Road, which is about less than a mile away from the property being considered. The land use component of the comprehensive plan states the goal is of Bonner County, it intends to balance and integrate its land use policies and proposed land use map with the components of the comprehensive plan to encourage the community to grow while retaining its rural character and protecting its unique natural resources. The land use component includes a matrix of land use. This parcel soundly fits rural residential in the matrix with density of five and 10-acre parcels, individual services with use of residential homesites and small farms, and in our case, 1,100 acres of farmland and timberland. This zone change would adversely impact the surrounding area. Be careful, there are too many possible development actions that could happen. This proposal does not fit the comprehensive plan map, and therefore, no zoning change should be allowed. The health, safety, and quality of life of adjacent landowners must be protected. The zoning commission is only a recommendation. The decision resides with you. Please deny, and thank you for your time and service.
My name is George Luslay. I live on Den Morris Road in an R10 zone, three-quarters of a mile from the proposed zone change. First and foremost, I oppose the zone change, file number VC 0012-22. While ill-conceived commercial aspects of the proposed development violate the area's rural character, I would like to address potential housing concerns. Last meeting and again at this meeting, Mr. Crim claimed in rationalization, there are hundreds of houses in the area. Hundred is a vague, questionable, imprecise number. Regardless, many of those houses are in areas subdivided prior to a comprehensive plan. They are sandwiched between Dufort Road and Fond du Rhin River. They are not south of Dufort Road. South of Dufort and elsewhere, our five residents are restricted to one resident per five acres plus one additional dwelling unit, even fewer in the R10 zone. An additional dwelling unit, or an ADU, up to 900 square feet with a maximum of two bedrooms is allowed on most properties in Bonner County. If you approve this zone change, the development will include five residential parcels ranging in size from 1.01 to 1.5 acres. If fully developed, with primary residences and allowable ADUs, that's 10 houses on 5.8 acres. That's five times the density afforded adjacent property owners and nearby R5 residents. If the zone change is denied, the full 11.8-acre property could divide into two similarly-sized parcels. Each could accommodate an appropriately sized, innovatively-designed, shared primary dwelling, comfortably and privately to house various members and an extended family. With an ADU on each parcel, the total number of dwellings is four. If affordable housing is in fact an issue, as was explained at the last meeting, four dwellings are far more affordable than five to 10 dwellings and are in keeping with residential limitations to adjacent rural residents and rural residents throughout who develop. Further, potential multi-housing development concerns are avoided and septic sewage disposal would comply with comprehensive plan titled 12-211.2. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'd like to yield my remaining time to Karen Kelly.
Thanks. It is 263, and since the next in line, we will take a five-minute recess for those that are working under pressure. Since it's been two hours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mary, are you at a school board meeting? I'm trying to get.
Okay. It is 3:01, and we are back out of recess. And Lady McLean.
My name is Diane Williams. I'm a 35-year county resident, past 18 years near the end of Lake Shore Drive about six miles from the applicant property. I'm a retired environmental planner. The project does not comply with state or county code. The Comp Plan MAP Amendment has been denied, so a rezone is not in accordance with the policies of the Comp Plan as required by Idaho Stat sheet 676511 and County Code 12-327. County Code 12314 requires conformance to all of the regulations specific to rural service center zoning. County Code 12327 requires rural service centers to maintain rural character and be served by adequate sewage disposal and water supply. County Code 12215 requires a detailed plan of the proposed site drawn to scale showing buildings, parking areas, traffic access and circulation, refuges and service areas, utilities, signs and yards. The applicant hasn't provided this plan or any detail regarding setbacks, stormwater management, or adequate water and sewer. The project requires a public drinking water system with a community well, since the Dufer Water System doesn't have adequate capacity. The well location and engineered infrastructure plans and specs need to be approved by Idaho DEQ. The project also requires a centralized wastewater system. County Code 12-412 requires that a common lot be set aside for the system. The Health District hasn't currently determined that the project can meet all standards for sanitary services, and DEQ will impose additional technical, financial, management and engineering requirements on the system. Neither the community well or the centralized septic system qualify as urban services required by the Comp Plan. If these were the urban services. Minimum setbacks are 50 feet between wells and gas tanks, 100 feet between wells, septic tanks and leach fields. More land must be set aside for a replacement leach field, and no paving or structures can be over the septic tank or leach fields. Boat storage requires a 100-foot setback from the road. The applicant hasn't demonstrated that these requirements can be met. The table in County Code 12-410 for Rural Service Center limits the gas station grocery store to 10,000 square feet. That's .23 acre. Boat storage limited to .23 acre. Dwelling lots limited to 2.5 acres each. A maximum parcel coverage 35% of four acres of this site. None of this has been followed on the development agreement exhibit map. There are two existing commercial areas less than a mile from the project. A cafe, convenience store on Vay Road, and a restaurant and gas pumps at Willow Bay Marina. Additional commercial services belong there for the Comp Plan and public input to reserve rural character, avoid sprawl and concentrate commercial uses. A short traffic count over a holiday weekend is not the common standard to represent traffic volume or demand for services. People knew the rural nature and available services when they purchased property or made plans to visit and would go elsewhere if they wanted urban services. We all know how to gas up when we go to town for groceries, et cetera. The applicant knew the zoning when purchasing the property. The county has no duty to facilitate speculative real estate investment, and Idaho law allows it limited via zoning, setbacks and environmental regulations do not violate the applicant's private property rights. The project is not consistent with the area's rural nature and adjoining zoning, is not compliant with Idaho law or county code, sets a bad precedent for future land speculation, and the rezone should be denied. Thank you for the opportunity to come.
My name is Rick Kramer for the record. Can I ask you to bring up a map that you have on your, that shows the Vay commercial property? Yeah. The one that shows the Vay commercial property in relation to this. There you go. Okay. Can I get them both on the screen? There you go. So, Mr. Hammond, yeah, give me the microphone. I really want you to just look. And this, this is, it's hard to miss. This is 25 acres of commercial property that's already zoned commercial. And what Mr. Hammond's asking you to do is change this because he doesn't want to put his project there. We're going to change it for the whole community, and the majority of the people sitting in this room are opposed to it. They're not for it. I'm not talking about, I'm not going to talk about, you know, regulations or, I don't, I don't care about, let's talk about people. The people that are sitting in this room is, the ones that are for it, wherever they are, they stated, yeah, well, there's a gentleman that said he's mooring his boat at Willow Bay, and there's no gas. That's blatantly false. There is gas. Another person said there's, that he had an emergency and there was no store. There is a store called the Vay, or the Vay Valley Market and Restaurant. And what they're proposing to do is put them out of business. That's our community stores. That's the one we've been using. That's the one we'd like to support. Why are we trying to put them out of business? People say, one of them said, I just want to stick to the facts. Well, parts are that there is a store, there is gas, and there's, there is huge opposition to this project. And if you vote to approve this, you are clearly going against the will of the majority. And if there were more people that, that could make it to this meeting, it's overwhelming that people in the community don't want this project, and you need to listen to that. It isn't about a developer trying to pull the wool over somebody's eyes. This is, these are people's real properties, they're real homes, and they're heavily invested in this. Thank you.
You guys have that mic, you could sit in your seats and talk. I don't even have to.
Good to stand up. My name is Jennifer Kramer for the record, and I live in Sagal, about six miles east down Dufer. So I just, a lot of people have touched on things I was going to say, so I won't be, I won't be repetitive, but I do want to reiterate though that Mr. Hammond knew when he purchased the property, it was zoned, what the zoning was and what he was capable of doing there. And so denying this rezone does not take away anything from him, nor does it violate his property rights. We've lived near Dufer and Lake Shore for nearly 10 years. Never have we considered there to be a need, nor do we desire fuel services between us and Sandpoint, Sagal or Priest River. For Willow Bay users, fuel services for the boats are available at Willow Bay Marina. And at the previous hearing, there was a person that stated there is a gas pump there that's approved for land use, it just hasn't been put into service yet. There's no need for additional retail services. There's the Vay Store, just one mile away. In the application, it was stated that they wanted to support tourists, that residents should take priority over the tourists and the needs of the residents and men of the res, I shouldn't say men, the majority of the residents in the area do not need nor want this to be rezoned. We certainly don't need any more boat storage covered or open or, or, or any of the sort. There's an excess of boat storage along Highway 95 in Sagal. It's quite the eyesore. If we create another storage area in that beautiful area of Vay and Dufer, it's not beneficial to the county residents, nor is it in line with the surrounding properties and their characteristics. I think that zoning needs to stay consistent with the neighboring properties that are south of Dufer. The subject property is surrounded by rural residential on the east, the south and the west. The property to the north across Dufer is owned recreation, but Willow Bay has an extreme amount of buffer, trees planted for buffer, and you can't even see the development from the road. And then I just, I was, I was kind of taken aback by when the staff put up the Bonner County Code 12-327, where Mr. Schumacher commented on this, but I just, to me, the ordinance is almost all you need to know. But it says, "Use of this zone, the rural service zone, is appropriate in areas designated as neighborhood, commercial, resort, community or transitioned by the comprehensive plan." But this, this piece of property is not designated as any of those, and so rural service center would fly in the face of that ordinance. And then, I'm so, I'm kind of surprised that, because the planning department approved this rezon back in December prior to the Comp Plan denial a few weeks back, I'm kind of surprised that they didn't revisit their recommendation in light of that denial. And then just lastly, I want to say real quick, there's talk about this development agreement that Mr. Hammond has put together. However, if, if you vote to rezone this and then he decides to sell the property, there's no, there's no, there's, that development agreement is not, does not have to transfer to a new purchaser, and then all bets are off and what can happen with this property. So I respectfully request that you deny the rezone, and thank you.
My name's Erin Gossi, and I live on Treetop Lane, which is about a mile or so west of the property. Roger over here is going to hold up a picture that, and point out the resort community that has been mentioned over and over again. But the, the thing is, the resort community is only operational for about 90 days a year. So for most people, it's like, why are you going to infringe on our property rights for tourists that aren't here 90 days out of the year? In 1995, zoning for a lot size for septic standards were reduced to one acre if not served by urban services. However, during later Comp Plan workshops, Planning and Zoning, Panhandle Health and the DEQ concluded that a one-acre parcel is insufficient and that the property rights of adjoining landowners can be affected by the proliferation of one-acre parcels with individual wells and septics. Due to a study of the Rathrum Aquifer, Cootney County now prohibits septic systems on any parcel under five acres. The Comp Plan directly prohibits individual septic tanks and large drain field systems, which is what I think Mr. Grim, Mr. Grim mentioned, but it is not allowed for what they're planning. The natural resources component of the Comp Plan points to septic tanks as a source of water quality degradation of a number of county waterways. The soils chapter of this component also points out the lack of suitable soils in Bonner County for adequate septic systems. Of the 64 soil units inventory in the soil survey of the Bonner County area, only three are rated favorable for the use of septic systems, while the balance are classified as severe due to soil properties or site features that are unfavorable or difficult to overcome. Furthermore, Panhandle Health's response letter for input noted that the applicant had not contacted them. Apparently that has been remedied since the last hearing. But in any of these things, just because an entity that you've sent requests for input, just because they don't reply or have a good input does not mean that the project's okay. It probably means that they're overwhelmed with all the requests and just don't have time to do a real study of it. And then I want to point out spot zoning. The definition of spot zoning in a handbook that I looked at called the Law of Planning, Zoning and Property Rights in Idaho, the definition says, "Spot zoning refers to a change in zoning of a particular parcel that is out of character with the surrounding area and the Comp Map Plan and is done for the benefit of the particular landowner rather than for the benefit of the community as a whole." Page 66. There are three widely accepted tests to determine illegal spot zoning, and they are felt to provide guidelines for the judicial balancing of interests. Page 67. Let's look at those. Number one, is the parcel in accordance with the Comp Map Plan? Answer, no. It is determined at the June 14th DICC meeting that a Comp Plan MAP change was not appropriate by two of you on this board. Number two, is the rezoning compatible with the uses in the surrounding area? Answer, the community thinks not. Over 200 opposing letters were written before the June 14 hearing, and over 400 community members signed a petition against it prior to the hearing. Adjacent properties are zoned rural five. Number three, will the rezoning of the parcel serve the public welfare or merely confer a discriminatory benefit on the owner of the property? Answer, the content in opposing letters and testimony today and at other hearings suggests there's a strong feeling that the requested zone change is detrimental to land values, rural character and safety. Mr. Hammond's application stated he has a passion for developing, i.e. making money. Thank you for your time, and please deny this rezone request.
Need to stretch my legs. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Vern Graham. I reside on Moose Meadow Drive about a mile from the Hammond site, and I've been there since 2002. What I'm going to speak to this afternoon is relative to the Bonner County Code of Ordinance 12-215, which provides for procedures for applying for a zone change and/or a comprehensive MAP Plan Amendment. While I recognize if you have already ruled on the comprehensive MAP Amendment, these two items are really connected in process and certainly should not be uncoupled. Let me read what it says. An applicant for a zone change or a comprehensive plan map change shall submit the following. A, a plan of the proposed site drawn to scale showing the location of all buildings, parking and loading areas, traffic access and circulation, undisturbed areas, open spaces, landscaping, refuges and service area, utilities, signs and yards, end quote. The required site plan under ZC0012-22 is this exhibit map. On this exhibit map, there's nothing drawn in here to indicate any of those features. The required site plan under AM0002-23 is an aspirational site plan. Under the rural service center zoning in this map, which is, yes, and it's already part of the docket, it does indicate some parcels, but it does not show any of the aspects, all of the amenities, i.e. lighting, service, the septic, water, et cetera. Secondly, Part 12-215 Part B states, quote, "An narrative statement that addresses, one, the effect of elements such as noise, light, glare, odor, fumes, vibrations on adjoining property. The compatibility of the proposal within the adjoining land use. Three, the relationship of the proposal to the comprehensive plan." Let me stop there for a moment. Neither the exhibit map nor the aspirational site plan shows what is actually proposed. It clearly does not meet the standards or the requirements within Article 12-215. Take for a moment that an acre of land is 43,560 square feet. Lot of, lot of square feet. I believe that the reason Mr. Hammond wants to have the three parcels of one acre each is to accommodate the boat storage unit. Heard a comment already this, this afternoon that on a parcel, he can put up boat storage of 10,000 square feet. And I think we've had comments as well of what that would look like. There's three units at Sagal up a Highway 95. Bana!
Bana wire. I didn't get to go to the front, but here they are.
But you could put a 10,000 square foot unit. So if you take that 40,000 plus acres or square feet of an acre, that's going to take up 25% of it. Now if you take, what do you, the area... Now, if you take, what is the area around it and the drive around it, pretty soon you're taking out all of the trees on each one of those acres. You've already seen two presentations by Mr. Grim with regards to what it would look like conceptually with the gas station. And the one we saw today, the gas station has already taken all the trees out of that corner. Now, these three one acre sites will take out all the rest of the trees. Now you've got four acres with no trees. Now, it'd be nice to have seen on the drawings, the aspirational or the site map, exactly what they are talking about in, in the placement, size, location. And I think it's also mentioned that one of them has to have a setback of 100 feet off of the road. So I'm kind of concerned as to how they're going to get 100 foot setback with a boat storage off a Dufer Road on one of those one acre parcels. Well, at the last hearing for the comprehensive map plan, we saw a slick animated presentation of the gas station convenience store. This was not to scale, and also missing in that presentation was the boat storage unit as well as the housing. Now, I'm not a developer, don't even profess to be, but when you start looking, oh, it would have to be removed, uh, from the trees on those, plus now you start talking about the septic, and I know that in our development, the septic takes up about one acre of land just for nine houses. So I'm not sure where that's going to go in relationship to this. Is this going to go up against the adjoining landowners or the adjacent landowners? But since we do not have a map that shows any of this in the undisturbed areas, we're left to draw our own conclusions. And I don't think that's what the plan in the ordinance says, allow people to draw their own conclusions on this stuff. Then when you take the lighting into effect with the trees removed and the noise, there is no noise abatement anymore on this area. So the property owners adjacent or adjoining will now be able to get all the noise and all the lights from that area. I was given three minutes.
I have a.
Right, okay. At the last meeting, we were also advised that this land perks, it can accommodate the septic. What I have also read is that this would be a community septic drain field. So when you look at the site, it's not on there, we don't know where it's going to go, uh, whether or not it's going to be, like I said before, up against the adjoining landowners. How big of a septic field is it going to have to be for the five residences, and you've got the potential for the 900 square foot ADUs? Everything is left for conjecture and assumption at this point in time. So in, in closing, how could the zoning commission have given a unanimous approval of a project with developer conditions wherein the applicant had not shown or met the required aspects of the application? Then in March of this year, the planning commission heard the map amendment and denied the change. And in June, you heard the comprehensive map amendment and denied that change. Now, as I present before you today, further reasons to reject, reject the rezoning based on the failure of the applicant to meet the requirements as outlined in BCC 12 dash 215. Because of the applicant's failure to comply with the requirements, and the zoning commission's failure in its, in its responsibility, the application for a zone change before you today is in conflict with a comprehensive map plan, and should be disowned, or should be denied. Thank you for the privilege to present this afternoon. Thank you. You can zoom in that map for me, please, at your convenience, to just the Hammond's parcel and with the next to it. Thank you. Perfect, perfect. Uh, name for the record is RJ Garwood, 58 Holmes Road. I'm right, well, just adjacent property line shares with Mr. Hammond's property, and just north of Mr. Miller. Thanks for your time, you guys. I know it's a lot of work. Been here for a long time, doing this several times. I've been here quite a few times too. Unfortunately, I missed the last meeting. I'm going to talk today, not of all the numbers you've heard, not of septic fields and all that stuff, we're going to talk about this guy. I'm directly affected. Been going through a lot of things with this whole process. Little bit about me later on, but there's a section here that, I was in church this weekend. To Timothy 1:7, where God did not give us a spirit of timidity, or cowardice, or fear, but He has given us a spirit of power, and of love, and of sound judgment, and personal discipline, which I'm trying to exercise. Abilities that can result in a calm, well-balanced mind and self-control. A little bit about me, I've been a 26-year veteran police officer. I've gone through all kinds of crazy stuff in my career. Uh, worked patrol, detectives, investigations, SWAT team, helicopter pilot, and I'm here because I got medically retired after a credit incident. One of the things I did during that time was a lot of investigations, followed a lot of money, a lot of drugs, a lot of drug dealers, a lot of bad players, and had a great time chasing those people. Got to work, right? During my time as a police officer, we lived by codes, laws, that are interpreted by attorneys or second guessed by prosecutors, who I'm married to. Uh, so, we have a black and white, yeah, we have a black and white, right? Just like you guys do, but we work in a black and white, and I had a chief one time say, hey, we got shades of gray, you can work in shades of gray. I know we talk about that, uh, with, with respect to this, but one of the things that we want to look at is, the comp plan didn't support this. I did not buy a residential property to rezon. I bought a residential property, have decent fire. In my retirement, rehab, mentally, physically, all those different things I could do out there. I didn't plan on changing. I'm not changing the zoning, it's not my intention, and, uh, you know, I think one of the things is, I'm an affected party. My property line is with Mr. Hammond. Um, you know, and with that, with Mr. Hammond in consideration, he bought the property, and he wants to do what he wants to do with it. I understand that. The property rights are a big thing for us here in Idaho, especially northern Idaho. And nobody wants to be in front of the law. But on the flip side is, what he bought, is not being denied, his rights by that property purchase. I love this plan, I love the business model, I love to see the guy make money. I have no idea at all, trying to live a little better. But I, I have to establish that, my rights are being affected should this go through. Our rights as neighbors would be affected as affected parties. I know I'm out of time, but again, I guess you guys can probably figure out how to oppose this, but I appreciate your time for everybody and staff, and thank you. Thank you for your service.
Easier to hold the papers if I have a mic in front of me. My name is Larry Madaski. I would like to address a few issues, uh, and some observations that I have with the application. First is the site plan and the development agreement. As recent as Friday, this last Friday, the site plan on the planning department website was nothing more than a plat or survey map. A site plan has ingress egress shown, building location along with any signage or parking lot lighting, any supporting structures, parking lot location, and where any of the other required services would be located. There have been several versions of plans circulated, but no definitive proposal. The application does not even mention boat storage specifically. With all this vagueness, we are told by staff and the applicant to just trust them, that whatever they finally choose to do will be good, judging by their past actions and forthrightness. I don't think so. Looking at the planning website as, as late as this morning, there was no tab for a development agreement. A friend of mine told me to look under the staff report section. Lo and behold, hidden at the bottom of the report, labeled Exhibit A, is a so-called development agreement. I might add that, that the particular development agreement still calls for the commissioners to sign off on it from the previous commission. Doesn't even have the correct names of the commissioners. It's attention to detail like that that gives me pause and concern when you're talking about the specific needs of a development agreement. You can miss that, something that obvious, what are you missing inside? There's a tab on the application summary for all other pertinent information, including a conceptual plan, but no development agreement. This was one of the primary reasons the commissioners remanded the original application back to staff and the applicant. They correctly saw that there was no definitive plan. I have negotiated several development agreements as for gas stations, convenience stores in my career. Generally, just as with the site plan, these agreements should be very specific and narrow in scope. They should be difficult to modify or alter from the basic approved uses and design. The examples of proposed uses I saw tossed around were very broad and weak. They are not even part of the application to start with. How did staff analyze something that has not been part of the application? Much less, how do you approve something that the applicant did not include in their application? With the county rules that govern these agreements, the applicant, or just as importantly, any future owners can amend these agreements with only the planning director's approval, and without any additional public hearings or public input. The prior commission properly asked for a very clear and definitive agreement and understanding of exactly what the applicant was proposing to actually do, not some pie in the sky conceptual pictures that may never become reality. The baseness and lack of a committed proposal should be caused with caution, and this commission should not allow them to move forward. If there is such a great need for the tourists that come a few months per year and use the marina, along with those that live in the crossings for those services, simply update the gas pump that is already there, and build some boat storage on the same property, like the original conceptual plan for the crossings called for in the marina. Problem solved. Evidenced by the large number of rural neighbors in opposition, no one else in the area has any need for the boat storage or gas station. The need for a convenience store or cafe is already being met only a mile away. There's plenty of room where the existing gas pump is to build the beautiful and quaint little building, as it's been described, right there. No rezon, no use permits needed. Additionally, there has not been any feasibility study done to identify whether or not this is economically feasible. Looking at the CStoreDecisions.com website, there is a plethora of information regarding the feasibility of gas and convenience stores, and the demographics needed to support the business profit, profitably. A recent example of a study that I saw there performed showed that a need of over 8,000 people within a two to three mile radius is needed, as well as a traffic study showing over 25,000 cars per day. The recent holiday traffic count conducted by the county shows substantially less than 1,000 cars per day, even on a major holiday weekend. Why wasn't such a study required of the applicant? This data is available. It's not difficult to do, but it is, it should be a requirement. Instead, you're being asked to approve something that has very significant long-term negative consequences if the business fails. What happens when we are stuck with an abandoned gas station and convenience store? What uses will they propose next, and what effect will an existing commercial zone have on rural neighbors? This could be avoided with some reasonable due diligence on the part of the county to require answers and documentation of the developer upfront. Basically, this applicant purchased the property and almost immediately started the process to get it rezoned for a quick profit. He knew exactly what he was buying. By his history and his statement on the application, that he has a passion for development. He is a professional developer. Just because he has a passion for development does not mean that his developments are always good. A good developer goes to the neighbors and sells his proposal and seeks input from them. He's had no discussion with the rural neighbors and would be significantly, that would be significantly and negatively impacted forever. It appears he believes they can just run roughshod over any opposition, get their approvals, make a buck, and it's on to the next project. Please say no. Thank you.
Thank you. I think she's cut it up at six minutes, right? And I think I got more than that, but I'm not going to reapply. I don't know, I could probably just, I don't know. And I, I, I'll send any more public service, except for the memo. Okay. Karen, pick up my phone, please.
It was just a list.
Yeah. Nothing juicy. My name is Karen Kelly, and I reside at 83 Waterfront Drive, about one mile from the subject property. At the 61423 hearing for AM 00223, I provided the creation history of the already defined 25 acre rural service center one mile from the property. The application for ZC 001222 was accepted by planning, but not initially dated as received. It later was revised to show it was received on June 3 of 2023. The application shows a proposal change from Rural 5 to Neighborhood Commercial. Daniel Brad questioned if the comp plan amendment was not being pursued. Mr. Grim provided a, I know, sorry, it was an August 24, 22 email. Mr. Grim provided a revised narrative and confirmed he was applying only for zone change requests for rural service center, citing an over 10-year-old file, CC 34511. You are aware that Neighborhood Commercial is a comprehensive map designation, and rural service center is a zoning designation. The application was never corrected. We began down the road and bring this here today. There's been two planning staff reports for this file, one in October and one for today's hearing. The initial staff report presented to the zoning commission states the applicant is requesting to change current zoning from Rural 5 to Rural Service Center. That is not what the actual application asked for. Staff analysis, approval recommendation was based upon the information found in the background portion of the staff report. Mr. Grim's narrative submitted with the application states the owner of parcel RP 55N04W017831A is requesting a zone change from Rural 5 to Rural Service Center. An amendment to the comprehensive plan is not appropriate because the current designation for this parcel is rural residential and a budding resort community. Dividing lines on a future land use map can be considered fuzzy, and not bright lines like those of zoning designations. File was heard by the Bonner County Commissioners on 12/21/22, and a draft development agreement was provided. The minutes state, Commissioner Bradshaw asked directly, is this a spot zoning or not? Mr. Wilson responded, and by saying, a thorough review of the comp plan against the zone change is needed to make that determination. Commissioner Bradshaw also asked what process the applicant would have to utilize to add housing to the acreage. Commissioner Bradshaw made a motion to remand the file back to the planning department and the applicant for a completion of a comp plan amendment, and asked for an update to the weak development agreement providing more detail. The motion passed. More work for the planning department and cost upon a home. I completed a public information request to obtain the background information used in the October staff report and ask questions. The response to my question on the background portion of the staff report was, this is usually background information that relates to the parcel or lot. It can include history of a lot, size of a lot, parent parcel information, access information, services provided, et cetera. To my question, what defines an underserved area of the county? Is that by population density or what? The answer was, this usually refers to services when it comes to land use planning. Services usually define the density for an area. If a property is served by water and sewer district, it is usually interpreted to not be underserved, and therefore usually allows for higher density. To my question, if there is zone land available for commercial development less than a mile away, but no one has pursued that yet, how does planning factor that into their determination of an area being underserved? I was told, sorry, I don't understand that question. Finally, would the planner help with how to differentiate between small-scale commercial and large-scale commercial? The answer I received was, we don't define these in code, and usually leave this determination up to the hearing body. So here we are today. At October and the December hearings, no housing or boat storage was requested, but in a second week, around This agreement was sent to Mr. Grimm by Mr. Hayley on May 22 23 and appears accepted. Her email, Mr. Grimm states, I understand that RV storage is not a listed use specifically in the code, so it would be difficult to use or to single such a use out as permitted. As such, the boat storage works. Today, we have a poor draft development agreement, unsigned, using commissioner names no longer in office, offering no more detail on what is exactly planned uses for this property. It does drop the requirement to follow Commercial Table 12333, which limits what is allowed for boat storage. Today, the applicant wants commercial use of retail food, gas, and sundries, commercial use of boat storage with no limits. How much boat storage? How many lots? How many houses, as later mentioned in the staff report? Why will the applicant not provide additional information and details as requested? It is obvious Mr. Bradshaw received useless paper from his motion. No site plan is available as required under Bonner County Code 12215 to help you, the public or the zoning commission, in their review to understand what exactly was being proposed. Mr. Hammond appears to want all options left open. Will soon consider a proposal to remove some site plan requirements from future requests as part of AM 00523. If approved, you'll no longer know the locations of all buildings, parking, trapping, traffic access, utilities, and more. Who does it serve to know less about what is happening to unincorporated land in Bonner County? A short building season does not mean cutting corners that do not protect your public or provide transpondence. The proposed uses for small-scale commercials of the public cannot have those criteria explained. The economic goal states Bonner County shall provide areas for growth of businesses, professional, and technical services without adversely impacting the integrity of residential neighborhoods. This has been ignored, both for adjacent parties and Koodoo Valley residents as a whole. Both staff reports state that the site is a board of emergency services, but no agency is on record regarding the requirements as if they can be met for fire, water, volume, putting your resident's safety at risk with the lack of information. The June staff report states if they get the map amendment, they need to provide adequate sewage disposal and water supply. The amendment was not in accordance with our comprehensive plan. Therefore, no map change needs to be included. All urban services remain unavailable. You know this zone change should only be considered where the neighborhood commercial designation has been approved. Lacking that, there is no reason to consider a zone change. The June staff report states the applicant has indicated that single-family dwellings will be developed on the parcel, but under the housing component, it states, this proposal is not intended to contribute to housing and deployed. Approval for more small residential lots in higher density than allowed under rural five only meets one person's perceived needs. This will remain a concern for residents should a minor land division or a short plant be pursued. This parcel fits solidly in the rural five designation. Critical habitat is not required to be in rural five. Urban services are not available. All surrounding property is rural residential. However, you're asked to make a zone change because of a nearby recreation area separated by Duford Road, a hard-surface boundary. This property is not adjacent with high-density development. You are told there have been no traffic deaths, so don't worry about public traffic concerns. Do not ignore your constituents. You took the time to write their opposition to me regarding this part of the property. Safety was in the top three of importance of over 250 responses. This is not a popularity contest. We must respect the opinions of your constituents. So many thoughtful emails were written, not hand-written. Read the room. There is a strong network of concerned constituents that this proposal built and that they will be, forever remain, alert, aware, and involved. The October staff report suggests approval and now the June planning is not willing to recommend approval. Entire situation is convoluted. Applicant and her representative refuse to provide detailed information. They only ask for more leniency. Staff reports don't match any recommendations. Standards and criteria are unmet. Uncongruous map amendment was denied and no zone change approval is supported. You have the ability to end this today. Avoid further judicial review and submit you have no option but to deny my search.
I'm Reese Silas Durkin and I'm going to speak from back here because I flew back at 3:00 a.m. this morning from Dallas, so I'm not going to stand up at the moment. I live at 4206 Vay Road, less than two miles from the property here. In terms of a rezone in the historic precedence of such things, I can see no evidence anywhere whether it was what Mr. Grimm brought forward or what the others, of a rezone less than two miles away from a zone that would allow the same type of thing without, you know, without any real changes. And I'm referring, of course, to the 25 acres that has already been referred to, so I won't reiterate. And so, in whole, I'm a little more probably centrist than the strong opposition of some of my neighbors, no offense to them. I don't have a problem with a gas station because when I brought my piece of property, I bought it in a commercial zone and I knew that could happen. I had to face that reality of, okay, there could be a big old gas station or boat storage or any of a number of things that could go in next to my house. But I don't think it's fair for neighbors that bought in an area that was rural five and clearly paid more per acre than I did, in all likelihood, to be put in a position to all of a sudden they live next to something that wasn't ever where it should be. And I think also for in terms of safety and some of the things that's already been brought up, traffic stopping and having to drive down Duford and be at a slower, or drive down Vay rather, be at a slower rate of speed would be safer in a safe, in a straight area. And so, not really worrying so much about the watercolor lines or other lines, but zooming back to neighborhood development, the potential, especially with smaller residential, to create all those five acre parcels that border the current proposed Hammond project to then be also chopped up into one acre parcels because of the adjoining rules and some of the things we've already tried to address, then that starts creeping on the south side of Duford with the higher density of residential and all these other things that could be created by it because it's no longer a viable properties for the rural of the five acres that people are looking for. And it's also intriguing to me that a lot has been referred to, to the development to the north as being a resort. It's a resort with a gate on it that the rest of the residents of the valley only have limited access if at all. And so, the weight of that is... So for timeliness, I'm just going to quit talking because I'm tired. Thank you so much for your time and please sign out.
Are we done with public comment in the room? I think you have...
Anybody else?
Say something. You know, be good. I'll say it again. Bill Rickeloff, running sheep ranch, get that map a little bit different. Good. Ben Morris Road, bring out Ben Morris Road all the way down.
I need to know where that is.
It's right here. All the way. Anyway, all the properties there. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. There, I own that. Got 80 acres in there around here. Pretty new to the area. Moved here in 1972. Been here ever since. Worked for the railroad. I've been running sheep ever since. I really am opposed to this and just simply because where I live and what I do, this will probably affect the other people. In essence, I probably could have ended this whole thing. Johnny Dieter, Debbie Gutter, Forrest, that I got with Diane's dad, we could have bought the whole damn thing. And then there wouldn't be a Marina or a Crossing or nothing. But that didn't happen.
Now we know who's fault it is.
I appreciate this. Anybody else? Well, so Seth, that's Mr. Hammond, says things will get better. Seems like a nice name.
Oh, I'm Billy Alderman. I live five miles from the project that they're proposing. I'm opposed. I was born and raised here, as so was my father. And I moved out there for rural. I came from Dover and I go out there and look now and it's like Dover's not Dover. It's nothing but people and development. And I moved out here to the rural area or out there. Keep it rural. And I don't want a gas station. Everybody knows if you live rural, you know you plant. You make sure your gas tanks will leave town, go to county, get groceries, and you do what you want. But I want to keep it rural for my lifestyle and my grandchildren. And I have great grandchildren, so I'd appreciate it if you would oppose this commercial development. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, is there any Zoomer naters out there? Okay, light one up.
Let's find the time to get through on all of this.
I'll speak up.
Who we got there?
My name is Denise Dickinson and I live over on Bluebird Lane at 347 Bluebird Lane. And every adult that lives under my roof, which is two others in addition to me, are opposed to this. We moved here because of medical conditions that require us to be rural in order to function. And if you turn this into a bunch of subdivisions and commercial industrial centers with a bunch of stuff, then it's no longer rural and it's no longer ours and it infringes on our property rights. My residency here is guaranteed for another 15 years at my residence because I'm locked into a legal thing. I only own half of my property and the owner of the other half of the property put it in trust. And so, when he died, it became irrevocable. In 15 years, my son will inherit the other half of the house and I would be able to abstake and leave. If you turn this into suburbia like Post Falls, I have no way out, no way to get to where I would need to be in order to function. Because I wouldn't have any money to invest because everything, my money, my blood, my sweat, my tears, all of it has gone into this property until I became fully disabled. So I request that you vote no.
Wayne Martin, you out there? Yes, Commissioner, thank you very much. Commissioner Williams, I was given extra time, not sure how much. I will watch the clock because you usually point at that to me and I hope the clock will now start. For the record, Wayne Martin, I do have a few different things. Many agencies have difficulty in answering unknowns on applications that the planning department sends out to them. They do have lack of staff. And how do you decide whether a plot of land like this is going to cause a problem with a school or with whatever until they actually know what's done, which many times is not required? Jeremy, you're correct. And you're probably going to mention this, this is not a decision to be based upon by popularity, but by them considering all facts. Mr. Bradshaw, I do believe at the comp plan hearing, you said that any agreement on this property stays with the property even if Mr. Hammond sells it, if I'm correct. Willow Bay's been mentioned, the rural service mentioned, Walmart and Maverick, why don't they have a place out here? Because they know a fuel station. Profitability is highly unlikely. You know, what's going to happen with the failure of the fuel station if that's put in and he has no money coming from it? You've heard many of the readings, things that I've written and when I have talked about things. Mr. Wilson, unfortunately, is not here, but he has repeatedly in the past mentioned on this and other files, bill not be a hazard or will not create a hazard to the neighbors. Please consider what he has said in the past. It is important. And I'm not trying to take away from Mr. Hammond, I'm trying to protect all of us out here. There was a comment that a gentleman mentioned about fuel tanks. Fuel tanks inspection, yes, they happen. I lived next to a failed fuel tank. We had to move out of the area for a while because of the high odor. It's done every three years, but things happen. And the Duford slough is a good example of that, that was inspected three years ago and there was a catastrophic failure. So just because it's inspected doesn't mean that it's guaranteed. A lot of the people that are out here that are snowbirds, they're out here for maybe six months and then they're gone. As has been mentioned before, where I live, I, if I get down to a quart of a tank, my wife is on me because it is a possibility we run out of fuel. So we gas up when we go in. We watch what happens. So people need to be aware of that when they move out here. Lack of accidents and slide-offs, they're not reported because we help take care of people. I guarantee you because in my neighborhood watch meetings that I've been having with people out here, we will start notifying the sheriff's office about that. So any accident, any slide-off, whatever, even if the tow truck comes up, it will be reported. So in the future, when that stuff comes up, they're not going to be able to say, there's nothing here, it doesn't happen. Yeah, it does. I do ask that you, all three of you, vote to deny the zone change. The conceptual development, you know, the one that was submitted to you folks shows a driveway on Duford. Then when Jeremy showed his, that driveway disappeared magically. Somebody, I think, caught that. But Rhodes and Bridges stated that if that project is put in with a gas station, that there should be no driveway on Duford. There is a driveway that has been cut in off of Duford onto the property and it looks like it's probably where the boat storage area is. None of these drawings, and Larry mentioned it, show roadways. What about snow storage if a gas station, boat storage goes in there? The snow's got to be put someplace. That stuff needs to be brought up. Jeremy's brought up about possibility of other things being used on the property. There was a mention of the map is aspirational, but all of a sudden Jeremy's changed from it's a watercolor with fuzzy lines to an aspirational map. I'm not quite sure why we changed it that way, but I do know, Jeremy, I hope that you'll explain why that change took place. That for the most part because you've gotten my... That for the most part, because you've gotten my responses on the other. Yep, from what I'm seeing, that's pretty much it. Thank you very much for your time. Once again, I do ask that you deny. All of you have a good day and I will see you in the morning.
Teresa?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Teresa Heisner for the record. I'm sure y'all are getting sick of hearing me because I'm getting sick of hearing me. But I will say it's very heartwarming to see the community come together in these times. As a local realtor, I do want to go on the record that this type of development within an area that is not zone commercial will most certainly adversely impact adjacent property owners and it will decrease their property values. That's just a fact. In addition, myself and other local landowners were tasked with updating the comprehensive plan pertaining to the areas of Priest River and Old Town. During those three years that we serve, we all agreed that Rural Service Center would be confined to existing Rural Service Center and any commercial or sub-area type development is to remain within the city zoning districts. And that is from that time on. It would be really nice if our planning and zoning department honored our wishes. Since we were tasked with that chore, those who volunteered spent more than three years to update the plan. We were hopeful. We were very hopeful, in fact, that our efforts would help guide land use because our zoning map is a mess. It really is a mess. I'm trying to explain that to clients when they're building or buying something. It gets a little ugly. So let's just all be honest. The majority of folks live here desire a country lifestyle, not a city lifestyle. I really hope that you deny this application and thanks for your time. I know everyone's tired.
Okay. rebuttal time?
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the time today to present this application. Jeremy, go ahead for the record. Yeah, this has been a long one. Sure. Trying to organize my thoughts here to hit on the big issues that I heard. And then I'll answer any other questions. I'll start with Wayne's because I really like Wayne. Wayne, the plans change because this is aspirational. Most developers I work for, clients, it's an incremental approach. You try to get approval for the zone change or comp plan amendment before you spend thousands of dollars developing detailed plans. And historically in Bonner County, that's how we, that may be changing. For rebuttal, Mr. Smanko, who I respect greatly, I just want to touch on a couple of things. The first is, you know, he did mention rightfully that it's difficult for you to come up with a, you know, a new decision. And he's right. You know, what it would take effectively is for you to overturn the findings of the planning commission and your own staff. You both, or I'm sorry, the zoning commission and your own staff who both recommended a zone change. The staff report found that it is in accordance with comprehensive plan. So I guess I agree with them in some regard. It would be difficult because you've got two of your guiding entities, your professional planners and your zoning commission, recommending that the zone change occur to Rural Service Center. Briefly off the road, I provide legal information. I'm not an attorney. I stated that. I try to state that at every hearing. I do not give legal advice. Getting back to the historical information that your staff relied on and that I relied on putting this application together, I'm just going to point again to file DC 34511, which supports Bonner County changing the zone when the map is not mirroring, the future land use map is not mirroring that zoning designation. Further, I want to point out, Chapter 6, One of Your Own Comprehensive Plan. And this is obvious to me. And I may be, I've got some rose colored glasses on here. The proposed land use matrix below lists general uses and characteristics of each of the map's designations. Since the map covered over 1.1 million acres, the map is general in nature. So to answer Mr. Smanko's perspective, I'd say the map is general. You've heard me say it's a fuzzy watercolor map. The comp plan map does not have to match this request per Your Own Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 6.1. Looking at the alleged lack of evidence that we provided in our application, you know, I've also heard allegations that it is going to be dangerous. It is going to create traffic. It is going to cause crime. And I just want you, Commissioners, to know, you can ask us for any information you feel you need to make a reasoned decision. Continue this with my client's wishes. We can pay for traffic studies. But again, we will provide the information requested by the county. Several of the residents lived three to six and maybe more miles away. And I just question their affected, affected people in terms of how this, this change might, might impact them. There's a lot of discussion about the diminishment of the rural character of the area. And I just want to bring you back to the reality of the rural five zoning in this area. Specifically, some comments about south of Duford Road being the bright line. We've got Birch Beauty, numerous lots that are a half acre in size. We've got to the north, Mountain View, numerous lots that are far below an acre and others in the area that I referenced. So when you talk about the rural character of the area, I guess we need a bit of sobriety to understand what does this intersection look like and function today? And I would put forth, this, this proposed use of zone change fits very well with the comp plan. Now that's course your, your decision to make today. Some questions about the development agreement. It is binding. It's limiting. It revokes the zoning if Mr. Hammond or future owners were to break those conditions. And that was put together by Bonner County staff. There's no intent trying to skirt around the issues there. Site plans. Historically in Bonner County, the standards that were referenced are applied at the time of a site plan development. That's when the staff applies the code, the setbacks, panitol health, et cetera. EMS, fire, all weigh in on the site plan. We are far from that at this point. We are talking about the first of many steps to potentially achieve the vision that Mr. Hammond has for this property. There was comment that it defies specific objectives of the comp plan. I would put forth, not according to your staff, not according to the zoning commission. The plan is subjective and you need to understand the whole plan collectively, not just the map, not just one section. It's a collective determination of whether this request is in keeping with the vision and the objectives of the comp plan. We heard about growth in the area. Fifty-three homes in Willow Bay, crossing out Willow Bay. That's precisely one of the reasons Mr. Hammond's proceeding here is because the zoning and the plan unit developments that the county approved have stimulated growth that demand services. We heard that no one wants this. It's only to benefit Mr. Hammond. But the record will show that there were numerous local landowners, business owners that are in support of that. I just want to correct that for the record. Urban services. Historically, Bonner County has considered a shared well or a community septic system as qualifying for urban, urban-like services. That's always been our intent and that's been what we put forth. Two more quick things. You know, no agency response. Again, that comes forward at the time of building location permit when fire flows, health safety, septic, DEQ, et cetera, all govern wells, septic systems, the like. And then finally, I just would leave it with this before Mr. Hammond might say something. When you look at the comparable rural five uses that I put up there, many of those have very limited constraints on them. So when you look at a service station and boat storage, I put forth, how more incompatible is that for a rural area than a rifle range, slaughterhouses, rock crushing, cell towers? Again, my rose colored glasses may be pretty dark today, but I see this as a very compatible use in comparison to those other uses that are allowed by conditional use permits in the rural five zone. So with that, I do appreciate the lengthy amount of time that you have put into this, that the public has put. I'm a big advocate for public engagement. And I would let Mr. Hammond, John, do you want to close it ending?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm John again, Hammond. I figure this is my last chance pretty much, so might as well let it all out. I'm going to address you three as well, but I wanted to address most of the comments that keep coming in. I mean, this is my fifth meeting now, so it's a lot of rhetoric to listen to from people that you've never met. So it's been an enlightening experience, learning so much about myself from everybody that I've never met. There's a lot of things here that just don't make sense to me. You know, people are sitting there saying, "Well, you could buy down the road at the hoodoo. You could buy theirs 25 acres down there." Well, that 25 acres was grandfathered in. I know they don't have any urban services. The actual cafe is on .86 of an acre and the other properties are residential, occupied. Out in the middle of a wide open field, literally 300 feet away from Hoodoo Creek. So I have a little bit of an issue with everybody saying that we're going to destroy the rural character with the lights, with this, with the fumes. We're going to, you know, impose on their rural lifestyle. But I need to do it down here where it would be more of an imposition and honestly, not even possible ordinance sense. I mean, a lot of things keep getting diminished along the way. You know, oh, there's a Rural Service Center less than a mile down the road. No, it's two miles down the road, off of the main arterial.
That's now.
Off of the main arterial, which would drive a lot more traffic into bay and create the exact problems that a lot of people are complaining about. So those kind of have a problem with, but things being said, like, you know, I knew what the zoning was when I bought it. And Mr. Hammond, you looked right at me when you said that at the last deliberation. And it almost, like you said, it looked a little disdain for like, you know, I should have known better. But alls I did was, I did look at it. I looked at it before I bought it. I met with Jeremy before I ever bought it. We went down and had a conversation with the planning department about what I was thinking would work there and made sense. They all agreed. So I did my diligence prior to ever purchasing the property, also knowing the rights I have as a landowner and purchaser of a property to go through this process that I thought I was doing illegally. But you keep hearing a whole lot of different stories. So that, that kind of bothered me a little bit, honestly, that I felt like I was being chastised for following the rule of laws that were placed in front of me. It led me to you. There's, there are just a whole lot of stuff here that it's about making sense. I mean, we've got 40 or 50 people here that are a core group, but it's really being driven by about 10. I mean, I've never seen somebody or an opposition come in on a county school bus before. That kind of bothers me a little bit too. I don't know what the issues there are. But there are so many more people that it actually affects positively. So if we put the land map back up. Jenna, can you put the Google map back up, please? I'd like to address a couple of the concerns that people are giving me here with, you know, we didn't think about them, how we're going to affect them and so on and so forth. But. The proposed commercial area is out here on the corner, correct? The Bradshaws, I believe. We were talking about, you know, how we negatively affect them. I mean, this is their vacation shop house. They live in Coeur d'Alene. So maybe they will plan on doing it in the future, but we're, we're many, 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 many feet away. I mean, there's probably at least a thousand feet between the nearest residence that says they're going to be affected. But let's address a couple of other issues too. Mr. Sparling, he's talking about the light effect and all of that. Unless he removes all the trees on his own property and creates a direct line of sight, he didn't have one. So I'm not sure how that's going to affect that. This property over here, the Freelands, you have, I believe, somewhere in 11 to 1300 acres. 300 of it is zoned R5, so that's 60 houses that can be done without anybody's permission. You guys just have to go apply for it. How do we know that your next generation is not going to do that? Everybody accusing me of not doing what I say I'm going to do. I don't even have a chance. But look at all these other options over here. So not to mention the 800 acres that you have that are 10 or 20. So there's another 80. Home. So there's a potential for 160 homes right here without anybody having to ask anybody's permission. Sorry, I'm trying to keep the top straight. It's kind of shooting off the hip here because as I said, after listening to this for a year and a half, it's been quite an enlightening experience. That's all I can say. So I can appreciate the trend of we actually, you guys have to put up with our hair days just going through it all every day. This is this. Shouldn't be, shouldn't happen that way. I mean, another thing that's really kind of got me fired up right now is the fact that we have another parcel nearby this that we had done a minor land division on. And we have the urban services. And I see a lot of people shaking their head, "No, that's not urban service." Well, yeah, I've done this once before. So I'm not a professional developer. I've built one piece of land before. We put in a shared well, which allowed us to have septic systems on one acre parcels. That's just a fact. There's nothing that we're doing here that is detrimental. It is nothing but a benefit to the entire community and the thousands of people that are in and out of there. Another thing is Mr. Freeland here. Hi, how you doing? She lives on one acre in the crossings. Mr. Freeland here has a friend who recently purchased the Willow Bay Marina. So this old antiquated, outdated, probably from 19 or 2005, is a, is not quite accurate as to what's actually happening in the area and the growth that's going to continue to happen. So he is currently adding 50 more docks. And I don't know if Mr. Williams is in here. I don't know if Mr. Williams is in here or not, but he lives two doors down to the south side of my property there. He's actually the one building the docks and installing them. So I mean, he can attest to the fact that it is being improved. I'm sure Mr. Freeland can attest to the fact of what his friend wants to do, which is make it more of a year-round venue. So growth is going to continue to happen. Flip side of this whole deal is, if you guys said yes today, it's going to be two years before I can ever stick a shovel of dirt in there to do anything regarding the boat storage or anything else like that. Because we all know, next I have to go through the minor land division. Then the boat storage requires a conditional use permit. So that's a whole nother process. So we're talking about a series of hoops and steps here that I have to do that are long-term. So it's not like this is something that's going to be in there tomorrow and affect a great many of these people that are, have an issue with. So it's a long process and this is step one. But step one also has to do with, I believe, you three were the ones that made the decision, being able to look forward to our future and what is, the needs are going to be as well as what they already are. So that's my two cents on it. I appreciate your time and we'll see how it goes.
So at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify for the benefit of the current planning director, the planning director we met with that Mr. Hammond referenced is the local planning director.
So at this time, we'll close it, public comment, and we will deliberate amongst the three commissioners and nears. Okay, well, I'm going to say something real quick, and Mr. Schmanko and Ms. Jackson, is that right? The attorney?
Barwood.
Barwood? Okay. As they'll attest, when we look at things, we have to look at it from a point of law. It doesn't matter what our opinion is. It doesn't matter what our passion is. We can't base our decision on what somebody might think is going to happen. We have to base it on what's presented to us in fact. And so I've been here 35 years, have the same concerns and cares that everybody in this room does, and I am a big proponent of property rights. I will fight for your property rights just as quick as I will the guy sitting right next to you. And if I err in a decision, it is always going to be towards the landowner if I make an error. But I will always fight for your rights, and I will base my decisions on what I believe is true and correct and in accordance with the law. And I don't know how, how a more appropriate spot could ever be picked, but that's not part of it, but I just wanted to put that out there, that we have to base it on the facts, not on the passion, the opinions, what could be, what's not going to be. Those don't factor into it, and it's like Mr. Hammond said, this is just a step in a process, doesn't guarantee anything's going to happen. So, Mr. Hammond?
Mr. Hammond, I will tell you right now, there was no disrespect intended. Tomorrow is Tuesday for me, which will be where for three hours, I will see some of the people who have attended this meeting and been relatively civil, hopefully return and be civil again. But I can also tell you, I've been here since 1979, and I've told things from individuals who I've never had a conversation with, deal with allegations that won't fit in Disneyland or Disney World, and I learn things about myself every Tuesday morning. I could predict with near certainty that tomorrow I will have a similar three to four hours of a sentence that I volunteered and asked for. And oddly enough, as long as my wife puts up with it, I will continue to do so. I also will tell you, I stand by my statement. I also support Mr. Bradshaw when I say I think that's a great location for a gas station. But both in accord with the comprehensive plan and the existing zoning, it does not fit at this time. It does not have my support at this time, and I am prepared to make a motion as such.
I'm not prepared to vote to the motion because of this type of, you know, but no matter where your decision goes, there's the exposure for the county for litigation over the decision. So I'm going to do my thorough review of this. One of the things that I want to point out to is the subarea comp plan. This has been put together by people in the community to look at the, the area. And one of the things that happens in a lot of these areas is what is rural character, and it is defined, and how do you want to grow? And one of the things that the subarea comp plan for this area is to encourage growth in the designated areas. And that's a significant aspect when we come to the concept of spot zoning, because I'm just going to jump into that pool really quick, because we say that a lot in Bonner County. When you compare that to the fact that we did not amend the comprehensive map plan, what we've done is we've said, your desire to change it into the neighborhood commercial didn't fit with the plan. And that was a necessary function, because as you've heard more than once, that the zoning designate, or the map designation is what allows for that zone change, because the requirement in Title 12 specifically talks about the neighborhood commercial. We don't have neighborhood commercial. We have rural residential. And so I find that in reviewing those two and listening to everything, we didn't meet the standard to change the zone, because the stat, the ordinance that we are supposed to look at doesn't have us making that change. And my dovetail on that is, I think that you risk, I actually think this would qualify for what would be seen as spot zoning, because when you look at the fact that we did not change the map, and then you look at the fact that of the area has commercial, it has rural residential, and it has recreation, it has the designated places for that growth, and that's also part of what the subarea comp plan says, is that the subarea plans wants the growth to occur in accordance with the way that that vision of the community is. And so if we were to select a piece of land and say that piece of land is going to change into neighborhood commercial or a rural district, well, then we have picked a piece of land to make that designation when we already have that designation in this area. It is important to acknowledge the definition of the rural service center district, because it, it does require the designation on the map, but it also says allowing for light industrial commercial use. And when it's talking about that, it actually defines it as primarily indoors. And so gas station is not primarily indoors. You might be able to argue with what storage would be like, but it's not an indoors type of an event. And so we all know, if you look at gas stations, that they don't, you don't make money on the gas, it's the C store. And that's where you actually get your profit. You are dictated by those that control gas as to whether or not, gas is the attractant for me to stop to buy something else. And so it's, it is not an accurate argument to say that you're not going to advertise for people, because I will tell you, that design is a fantastic design, and it will draw people to want to go to that store. And it is similar to a design that's in Harrison, Idaho, around Coeur d'Alene, where the design of that store attracts you to stop at that store. It's actually very similar. They even sell like, their C store is old style candy that makes you say, oh, we should stop there, kind of a thing. And so I don't see that the zone change fits rural service center district, because it's not on our map. So, and I do think that this, this would be seen as spot zoning. The other thing that I like, want to do is look at our property rights. It's not just the property rights of the owner, but the impacts to the property around. So it is not unreasonable to see that if you have an area that's isolated as rural residential, and that you put a gas station in there, there's going to be some impact. There's going to be positive impact to some, like the Marina who wants gas, there's going to be some negativity to others. And so we can't, in my opinion, take our comprehensive plan and say, we don't follow the plan, we can just change the zone, because then we have done a disservice to everybody who made a decision to move into particular zones for the protection of that plan and the work that they put into the comprehensive plan. And so to change it, again, risks the idea of going in favor of an individual property owner versus what the map says, what the zoning restrictions are of that area. Because I do understand that the Hammonds did seek the idea of making that change, but that is a risk to the purchaser if the desire is to make it something that it is not. And the planning staff and commission and zoning commissions cannot guarantee that the board of county commissioners are going to go along with that idea. And I will point out that even in the staff report, it, they do point out that that designation requires neighborhood commercial, that's what it says, and it doesn't. And we're bound by that ordinance. And so that alone makes it very difficult for me to achieve a yes, move forward with a zone change of this kind, because it doesn't fit the ordinance. There is a difference of some attorney's view of, you know, urban services, what is that? And then can you forecast it down the line, or is it just at the time of development? And when you look at urban services, there's not urban services in the rural area on purpose, because people move to the rural area. And I hear from the community, not specifically just this one, but in general, that when we allow these types of changes in the areas that we have identified as rural, we actually are losing the reason that people actually move. And so then, or post-halls is a good example of that. As you slowly pull away the zones and the map, then you end up with something that you didn't want, but you invested in. And it is, that's a hard one to overcome. And nowhere in the presentation from Mr. Grimm does he identify how the zone change protects the property rights of those who live in rural residential. And that is significant, because we are charged with making sure that we do that, so that there was a two-way street view of property rights, not just of the person who purchased, but of the people that are already there. And I don't see that we achieved making sure that we protected the investment of the people that are there. Population is going to increase with school, and I'm going to combine that with school facilities. West Bonner County District is very rural, and the bus rides are very long. And so the impact, I'll say the same disclaimer, that school district is going through a significant change, and I actually have been reaching out to them on, what are you guys going to start answering some of this? But there is a reasonable impact to that service center because of that type of a change. There is going to be an increase in density related to that type of change. When we go on to economic development, because we don't move forward with a zone change does not mean we have failed to meet the requirement of economic development. What we actually have done is upheld the comprehensive plan that told you to put the economic development in the zone in accordance with the map. And so we're upholding what we have put forth. And so the argument could be made that by trying to force the zone change, we actually are negatively impacting the development that is the increase in value of rural residential by pulling in commercial into an area that we didn't map it in. So I don't see that we are negatively impacting economic development by not allowing a gas station or the C store and additional services. When we go on to our next, it's land use. And again, I don't agree with the assumption of Mr. Grimm that it's just a watercolor picture and we can change it, because then that means we have nothing by which we can hold ourselves to. And that's the reason we do a comp map. It isn't that, it is, it's not a, you have to do it exactly what it says, there is some wiggle room, but it is something that we have to give good consideration to, and the land use map does not support that change either. Natural resources, one of the things that, it's not just about the water, it's also about the soil, it's about the animal life, it's about more than just the look that is there. And so any disruption of that magnitude, and it has to be magnitude, because it is not zoned for commercial use. So it is a significant change to rural residential, to change it into something that is commercial. We are going to have a negative impact, even if it's just that APV or don't cost that visit property. And so I don't find that we've done that either. I do understand, public services is not seen as your individual septic on each lot. It is a, the community well that you're mentioning. There's a possibility that down the road that that could happen there, but there are not existing public services and utilities on that site to support that. So for, and there's been the talk about affordable housing. This is, it's not for, that term isn't used for a person that's dividing for family. That's a, if you're going to do. I'm sorry, what?
I know there's an issue with this whole thing, but there's reasons I would like to address with you.
No, no, no more comments, no more comments. And if we could, just stick with the zoning issue.
Well, this is part of the zoning issue, and I, it's important, and I do understand that past commissioners have not gone point by point by point, but this helps submit a record to the court of how I came to my decision. And that's critical in order to reduce litigation costs. So I'm going to go point by point. So the community design is also an issue, because the design is not within the community. This is an individual parcel really attempting to change the design of the community as a whole, because I do understand what it comes down to is, commercial was available, but it didn't have the look that the current property that you purchased to foster the idea of the, the kind, the location, the location of the current commercially zoned property is not what would fit your plan. But the answer isn't then to go into rural residential and force the plan on rural residential to absorb. And in this case, this particular subarea plan actually does clearly identify what the design and the map is of that particular area.
Which one else? I'm sorry. I ask for clarification regarding your reference to the subarea plans.
Sure.
Just trying to understand, what is the reference to the subarea plans? Because it is my understanding that there is no legal standing for that. So I'm just concerned that you're trying to utilize that. The comprehensive plan has legal standing. Subarea plans were a device that was crafted by previous boards and commissioners, which I'm keenly aware of, in order to provide background and information. I just wanted, I'm seeking clarification as I'm understanding and listening.
So subarea plans are put together by the community. The comp plan is supposed to be a collection of the community input. And so what took place was the board commissioners commissioned every, the different areas to come together as a group to develop the comp plan. In our current comp plan, that is actually what we hear every single time we're arguing about comp plan. Yes, we did review the subarea comp plan, and we pulled that information in. So it is reasonable and appropriate to reference the subarea comp plan. That information is actually in our current comprehensive plan, because that was the input that was given. So that is how we come up with the updated comp plan. Part of it is how we did that. And I believe our current planning staff is putting all of the subarea plans in the back of the current comprehensive.
That has an appendices.
Correct. But it doesn't, it doesn't devalue the input of.
In no way, shape, or form do I say that.
One of the reasons that I make mention of it is because the question has come up of what is rural and what is that design? And that design and that shape comes from the comp plan, because, which is also part of the subarea plans.
Thank you for that clarification.
No worries. So it's for those reasons that I don't support a zone change, because it is not in line with the vision of the area. It didn't get a comp plan map amendment, and the reason that the amendment was requested to be asked for is so that it could fit that design, and so that it could meet that. And it does not meet that category at this time. And so for all of the reasons that I listed, I am ready to call for a vote.
Got to put motion on the floor.
Which means I have to say I'm ready to call for votes in what I said.
How about a motion first? It won't steer either.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny this project filed ZC0012-2 to requesting a zone change from the rural five to rural service center based upon the following conclusion. Conclusion one, the proposal is not in accordance with the general and specific objectives of the comprehensive plan, specifically property rights, land use, and community design. Conclusion two, this proposal was reviewed for compliance with Title 12 Bonner County Revise Code and was found not to be in compliance specifically with Bonner County Revise Code 123-57. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report, direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in the taking of private property. The action that could be taken, if any, to obtain the zone change is to, one, file a new application with the planning department and meet the standards required by Bonner County Revise Code or, two, pursue such remedies as may, as may be applicable in Title 67, chapter 65, Idaho Code.
A second to motion.
Roll call vote.
Sure.
Bye.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw is going to vote yes, but only because the previous hearing was a two-to-one vote that I did not agree with. But once that board has made that decision, I will support the board. And so that would be an I, I guess, at this point in the game. Okay.